Seashore was haunted.
Oh, I believe it.
No, I see. My favorite story is.
I haven't spoken to you.
You know what?
I thought that's just. Well, I guess I did open it, which I shouldn't have.
Oh, that's an assessment.
It is, yes.
I can't imagine where that would be.
Can I have my family come on? And I don't have a boat.
Oh, you got that too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the heck?
Just.
Just spam?
People are, oh, sure.
You'll get.
Turn them on.
At least once a week, twice a week, you get some stupid thing.
Oh, yeah.
Shut the door and lock it.
Yes, no. I'm going to lie by.
Tell my husband.
But, yeah.
In a way, nobody's, nobody's going to argue with.
Goals, wouldn't it just come from?
Thank you.
I was like, thank you, no, I have to leave the building.
All right, we're ready. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Iowa City Conference Board, and we're going to go to item number B, which is roll call by the taxing body.
Iowa City Council members present, Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn. President. Armson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Johnson County Supervisors. Green Douglas.
Here.
Green. Fixma Ores. Porter. Sullivan.
Here.
Board of Education. Eastham.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
All right, well, Happy New Year to everybody, and we see two new faces. So, of course, Andrew, who is on the city council, and also Tavi. Welcome to both of you. Yes, excited to have you join us. We're on to item number three, which is a motion to approve minutes of the March 1st, 2022 conference board meeting. Moved by city, moved, uh, seconded by the, um, school board. I'm sorry, moved by supervisors, seconded by the school board. And do we do a roll call for that as well?
I think so.
Okay, so we'll do roll call.
Sorry. Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Green Douglas.
Hi.
Green. Fixma Ores. Sullivan.
Yes.
Eastham.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number D is fiscal year 24 budget. The purpose of this meeting is to set a date for a public hearing on the Iowa City Assessors' proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. And we'll just ask that Brad Comer present his, um, budget at this time.
So, uh, and I've included in the packet our budget and some additional information. It's typical of what you've seen in previous years. Most of our budget is, uh, related to personnel, eighty, eighty percent or slightly more. In salaries, we've budgeted for two and a half percent increase for cost of living, and then staff would receive, uh, percentage increases based on merit, various percentages. And then just addressing a few of the big ups or downs. Postage and printing are down because 2024 is not going to be a reassessment year, so we won't mail out assessment notices and won't be printing them. Mileage and auto is down because we purchased a new vehicle last year, and that will not be needed for fiscal year 24. So it's just the typical mileage and auto maintenance expenses. We have started, uh, savings for the next vehicle in our auto replacement reserve, which we just add, add a number to that each, each year until, until it's needed. So, those are the main things. Overall, the budget shows a total decrease of 1,458 or just point one-two percent. There will also be a decrease of 4.97 percent or forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-two in the amount to be raised by taxation. And that's due to carryover from last year's budget. I don't really have anything else to add. I'd like to thank my evaluation committee of Charlie Eastham, Bruce Teague, and Rod Sullivan for meeting with me on January 6th to go over things. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody would have.
Did you say that decrease was roughly fifty K?
The amount that we'll ask for taxation, yes.
There are no further questions for you. Item two is just to discuss the proposed budget. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the publication on the proposed budget?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the city, seconded by the county, and roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the motion.
Dunn.
Dunn.
City, and then the county.
All right, Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Green Douglas.
Yes.
Green.
Aye.
Fixma Ores. Sullivan.
Yes.
Eastham.
Yes.
Malone.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number E. Motion to set a date for a public hearing. The suggested date right now is February 21st, 2023.
Move that date.
Second.
All right, and we'll do roll call, please.
And once again, I, I didn't catch who made the second. You.
Yeah, supervisor and then the city.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Green Douglas.
Yes.
Green.
Aye.
Fixma Ores. Sullivan.
Yes.
Eastham.
Yes.
Malone.
Aye.
All right. Item number F is present examining board application. And.
There was just, uh, so the county advertised it. There was one applicant. It's Mike Hench. He's, uh, currently the executive.
Executive Director.
Director at the county, for the county supervisor's office.
So there's only one person to appoint unless there's any other thoughts, all right? Can I get a motion to appoint Mike Hench for the examining board member?
Some of Taylor.
Moved by the city, seconded by the county. All right, she was louder next to me.
Ready to go.
All right, roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Green Douglas.
Yes.
Green.
Aye.
Fixma Ores. Sullivan.
Yes.
Eastham. Malone.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number H is board comments. At this time.
Mr. Mayor, I would just mention to the group, in case they didn't take the time to check it out, that the Iowa City Assessors' office has once again performed amazingly when compared to their peers in the state. And Brad's office does outstanding work.
All right, we'll move on to.
I would like, I mean, I'm, if I could add just a comment on the, the real estate market in general, because we will be sending out assessments this spring. They're due to be out April 1st. We're lower, our assessments relative to what things are selling for is, are the lowest that we have records for. So there's going to be big assessment changes in the spring. For 2022, our median sales ratio was eighty-two point two-two percent, which, uh, for example, if a, if a property were worth a hundred, were to sell for a hundred thousand, which doesn't really happen here, but if it were to, uh, we'd be at eighty-two thousand, two-hundred and twenty on it, and we need to be at market value, or within five percent is the, is the goal. As I said, that's the lowest our ratio has been since at least 2000 and probably much longer than that. And the previous low that I have was in 2004 at eighty-four and a half percent. We do adjust our assessments every other year, so, uh, this is the year, and we're expecting single-family residential assessment increases to average nearly twenty percent.
How?
So.
About multifamily?
Those will be double-digit, but probably on the lower end of that, maybe, uh, they've, they've seen much bigger increases the last few cycles than what residential has. So they've had double-digit increases most of the time, other than 2021. Commercial, I'm expecting just under fifteen percent. So everything, uh, is going up, but residential is the most significant.
Now, when you say twenty percent, can you give us a dollar amount that I kind of put this all in perspective for us?
I'm not sure.
When you say that, you say it's going to go up twenty percent.
Well, if your, if your assessment was a hundred thousand, your assessment would then be a hundred and twenty thousand. And the intention is to be, to, to get our properties in line with market value, which we do every two years. That, since, so I should add then, the rollback number, which I don't know how familiar you are with, is with the rollback. On residential property, the rollback, and then there's question to what this number, that number will be this year. There's some legislation that might change things, but right now, the rollback for this coming year will be fifty-six percent and some odd number. With the, and now it, it adjusts based on how the, how the assessed values across the state change. And, and the twenty percent isn't unique to just Iowa City. The whole state is seeing this. And, uh, we did a survey with assessors, and the expectation was that the rollback may drop to around forty-eight percent. So if you do that calculation, if the, I, I guess I only say that to point out that although people's assessments will go up a significant amount, their taxes should not be expected to corresponding. I mean, the rollback, the amount that they're taxed on will, will decrease. So just to try to.
What if, what if property values fall? I mean, I'm hearing that we may, you know, we're kind of, we have seen dramatic increases, but that may, you know, with mortgage rates and so forth, fall.
Good point. And so the, the mortgage rates really started their big changes in the late summer, and we have continued to see the sale prices at least stay the same, if not go up. December was worse than November. I mean, they were still going up. The number of sales, though, has decreased, uh, in those months compared to previous years. So I think that's, I think that's a good point, that, yeah.
Could you make adjustments? Are, are you allowed to make adjustments?
We, our assessments, assessments are strictly based on, uh, market value, not on how, how many number, the number of sales. And it's based on the most recent year's sales. So anything that happens after January 1st of this year would not be reflected.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by county, seconded by city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Want to remind people that the mics are still on.
Counselors, all right. Counsel is just returning from a closed session back into our open executive session. We just returned from a closed executive session back into our open session. And we're on to item number three, which is adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Bergus. Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. So we are going to transition to work session. All right. Today is January 24th, 2023, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And the first item is continuation of our budget discussion.
Mayor, if I could just give a brief intro. I did want to elaborate on one thing that was mentioned at your city conference board, and that Brad Comer, the city assessor, alluded to. On Friday, there was legislation introduced to amend the residential rollback figure. The Legislative Service Agency identified what they felt was an error in the calculation of the rollback that was previously given to cities. So there's been legislation introduced to correct that error that would take effect and impact the current budget that we're working on, your FY24 budget. That would reduce the rollback approximately 2%. And for Iowa City would be about a $1.7 million impact, primarily to the general fund, but a few other property tax-supported funds would be impacted as well. At this point, all the advice that we're getting from the state is to proceed ahead with our hearing schedule. But we have to understand that this legislation's been introduced. It may be entertained and passed, and if so, we will have that $1.7 million deficit essentially out of the gate with this budget. So I say that just for your awareness. I'll keep you posted on where that legislation and any other property tax legislation goes this session. But I wanted to add some more background to the assessor's earlier comment.
Just off of that, Jeff, do you, do we have a sense of what, or would we even have in any of our levies that would be applicable to the loss if it's general fund dollars? Like, what would it take to make that up? Do we have any opportunities?
Yeah, we really haven't had the time to go back in and provide some thoughts on where we would take those funds. The general fund's about 1.2 million is, would be the overall impact. Thankfully, we have enough reserves to where we could absorb that in a given year if we were willing to utilize our reserves for that purpose. But we're beginning that process now of analyzing exactly how we could overcome that challenge should that legislation pass.
Do you think there's any likelihood that staff would recommend levy changes outside of what's been proposed?
Well, we don't, we don't even know if that's going to be possible because if they don't amend the approval, the budget approval dates, we have to set our max property tax levy, you know, within a couple of weeks here. So unless we just wanted to put it up now while that bill's being concerned or being discussed, we wouldn't really have that opportunity. As we march ahead, we'll lock in the property tax rate that we've discussed or that you may maybe amend tonight. And then we have to live with that. Again, the bill could be fluid, too. There could be amendments offered to the bill. There could be deadlines that are changed. There could be all kinds of changes. But at this point, no. Then there's only a few levies that we could actually increase. You can't increase the 810 levy, your general fund levy, because that's maxed out. But we could potentially look at increasing debt service levies or employee benefits levies and trying to make up some or all of that gap.
That's kind of what I was getting at. Okay, thank you.
And again, once we set our, for our public hearing purposes, we can always, in our final decision, we can reduce that levy rate, but we can't go above whatever we set as our.
That's correct.
If we're thinking any change, then today would probably be a good time to talk about it.
Yeah, at this point, I'm not prepared to recommend that we make any changes. I really just wanted to make you aware. Again, the legislation was just introduced late last week. And as you can imagine, cities across the state are sounding the alarm bells to their delegation. So we're hopeful that nothing will happen and the rate that they advertised last fall to cities so that we could begin the budget process will be honored, and then they can make any corrections they need to with next year's rollback rate. But we'll begin on kind of behind the scenes to analyze scenarios if we do have to make up that 1.7 million.
But it does sound like even just in the course of describing, sorry, in the course of describing it to us, that there are some options that you guys can look at.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, really a credit to past councils and the way budgets have been structured. We do have the reserves to take a short-term hit like that, if you will, without impacting service levels. That may not be exactly how we want to handle this, but push comes to shove, we could, we could absorb that. That's part of the reason the emergency reserve was first created. We created that in 2014 after the 2013 property tax reform, knowing at that point we had the opportunity to build our reserves and we weren't quite sure what that impact from the 2013 property tax reform would provide. So we created that emergency reserve for a scenario just like this. It's just unfortunate that it's a year before us today.
Can you remind us how much we have in that fund?
Approximately 5 million, maybe a little bit more. 5.23, yeah.
Well, I'll just jump in then on some general comments and continuing our conversation from not so much the CIP, but sort of our operational conversation of Saturday, the 7th. So one thing that I highlighted on that day was that the timing of the preparation of this budget had to come before we finalized this strategic plan. And so in front of us on all the screens, we have, you know, our strategic values and impact areas that we've gotten behind. And I would ask that we consider not sort of losing the opportunity to act more aggressively in implementing aspects of our strategic plan and trying to maximize alignment of our actions with this plan that we put a lot of energy and goodwill into for our community. So specifically, you know, just to kind of, again, make a pitch to all of you, I think we really need to ramp up our community outreach. You know, right now, we have a neighborhood outreach position that is a halftime position. When Marsha Bolinger retired, you know, that position was split into two halftime positions. And I think with the emphasis on strengthening neighborhoods and helping community safety and well-being, we really want to empower neighborhoods to organize, empower leadership, create leaders out in the community to learn how to work together and strengthen those neighborhoods. We've seen the benefit of that kind of outreach and sort of infusion of skills and resources that really doesn't take a whole lot of money, but takes, you know, the staff capacity to do that. We've seen the value of that, particularly, I think, most recently in the South District. And I think we need to be really ramping that up. So I think, you know, what Iman Sharif is doing now is tremendously impactful. An opportunity last weekend to attend a, the homeownership program sort of informational session that was held at one of the Taylor Drive duplexes that we recently renovated. And it was just unbelievable, hearing people who had benefited from this program, people who were considering becoming homeowners, their, how they were saying, you know, I used to not like this part of town, but hearing your investment in it, hearing how you feel raising your son here, hearing how, you know, you can see with homeownership how the neighborhood is coming together and you can rely on each other. It's so powerful. It's so powerful. And when you think about that kind of impact in places where, again, tying it back to safety and community safety in a neighborhood where we know, you know, policing presence is high and calls for service may be disproportionate, I really just think we need to shift towards that kind of proactive community building. And our staff can model this kind of resilience and support right within the neighborhoods, but I think we need to put more to it. So I think it could also tie in to a position that I know staff had been looking at on the sort of centralized grants side. You know, I think having coordination between finding resources and being able to funnel money through the city, supporting a variety of departments, and then on the compliance side as well. Because part of the role of our community outreach folks should be connecting those additional resources and finding programmatic outlets with our nonprofit partners, you know, things that we can help support in the community when additional funding sources arise. So I see that kind of all coming together. And, you know, to put a finer point on where do we find the money, I'm really concerned to find, to hear, you know, about this legislation. It's not surprising. We know that in addition to the rollback issue, additional property tax reform is on the table and could impact us sooner than we want. So my proposal that I set on the 7th, I'll just reiterate, which is, in our police department, we have patrol at 78 officers currently hired. If we stayed at that level, at that current staffing level, that would free up the funds from the unhired, unfilled positions, which is six positions now, and those could be shifted towards this kind of community outreach empowerment, finding resources, and helping distribute those resources in the community.
I can't say it as well as you've said at Council, Bergus, and I was thinking when you were talking about the South District neighborhood and their association and how it's grown, and they have regular meetings, and they've got some very strong people. And the South District is really moving along. It's really helpful. But I'm remembering when Counselor Thomas and I attended the listening post on the West Side at the, what is that called?
Hasn't Ridge?
Yep. It's Hasn't Ridge, and primarily Sudanese population. And what came from these people and their conversations is they need something like that. They need a stronger, and I think, and Marsha is going to help them with that, to kind of get a neighborhood association going. But if we've got some resources in the city and some funding for even one position, maybe not all six of those, but maybe at least one of those could be, or even four of the six, so that's one in each district, each district of Iowa City, to help those districts thrive and grow and be a place that these residents could feel a part of their community and know their neighbors. So I think that's important.
Yeah, I tend to agree on many levels. You know, Laura and I, we've talked about this before this meeting. But I think having more organizers in the community who are bringing people together around common goals, shared experiences, is something that is really important and something that we need to move toward. I would just say that I'm less certain on the particular funding talk of your proposal. So something that I definitely want to see, I definitely want to see more organizers in our community, as one myself. I can't say anything else. But I am interested to see what we can do, if anything, to find, you know, a new revenue stream or, you know, a pre-existing revenue stream to, you know, making some type of efficiency to make sure that this is paid for potentially in a different way. But otherwise, I strongly support getting more people on the ground and building the kind of civic culture that in many ways our country used to have a lot more strength with, that, you know, I think a lot of digital, social media and all that type of stuff has degraded. So I really strongly support getting more of those people on the ground.
I agree, and I have spoken with Laura and to a certain degree with Pauline as well. How can we, you know, activate the strategic values and areas of community impact as much as possible through the partnerships and engagement? So I, you know, I've been, in addition to what has been So I've been, in addition to what has been said, I'm very interested in issues related to youth. I think that is, would be a focus of any program that I would be particularly supportive of. And the notion of neighborhood is important in terms of structuring this. I do believe that there's an opportunity for stronger governance at the neighborhood level. And as we've been saying, to try to activate social capital, which is, I think, working at a deficit for various reasons. So I'm right now just having conversations. I don't have enough, you know, I can't translate it into a very clear vision, but I do think the idea of potential partnerships with the school district and perhaps ICAD, the city, people who are already active in these neighborhoods, and seeing collectively what makes sense.
If I can piggyback because I'm in a similar state where I think that to be able to get some, another Iman in who can help those in the community grow for themselves and have that kind of ability as we've seen in the South District and the way in which it's not centralized anymore. Angie Jordan would be the first one to say. She's incredibly excited about the fact that more and more people are starting to own and be a part of the fabric of the neighborhood, and that's what we want. So I'm absolutely in favor of that. But I'm also remembering when we were talking on that Saturday about maybe what it is that staff needs doesn't look like necessarily what we want. Maybe it isn't front-facing. Maybe it is someone who needs to be in the office working on compliance or what have you. I think it's a yes and. We need people out there to help empower different parts of the city. And then we also need to be able to be cognizant of what staff needs to help them do their work so that maybe they can get out in the field more for those who would want to. So like John, I'm just kind of in the middle of conversation, and I'll just throw another spanner into the works, so to speak. But one of the things that actually the mayor and I, when we were in DC this past weekend, through conferences, we were told in no uncertain terms, there will be a lot of federal money coming through and coming directly to municipalities. And so one of the things that actually I would like us to think about, sort of dovetailing and thinking about perhaps this is one way in which we could fund such a thing, as Laura's talking about, is money that's coming to us. But I'm interested in also raising it for conversation to get going on actually having a grant writer and perhaps in somebody who also could work with the compliance piece within city staff, not necessarily within a department, but a centralized, like someone who is able to go out and seek out these grants, to work with staff to get the information that they need, and then to provide, you know, to do the work of putting the grant together. Because I think that staff is so strapped for time, and there's so much going on that I think that this could be useful. And I do apologize, Laura, because I realize I did this sort of like segue into what, you know, kind of a different venue, but I think that it is all of a piece to, and we have talked about it, where this is sort of this larger view of what are the strategic, what are our strategic values and how do we achieve them? And, you know, the bottom line is, especially at this time of year, it's understanding it's about the budget and what can we fund. And I do think that actually putting someone in place who can actively, as their primary function, go out and find money for the city is going to help a lot, especially in light of what the state is currently kind of assessing. So I throw that on the table into the mix as well, but it's certainly not as an either-or situation, but just to say like, I guess my priority would be for this grant writing position. However, it's with a full understanding that I think that we need to think aggressively, to use your own language, about going after what a community outreach position could do since we've seen how successful it is.
I think the theme is building capacity so that staff has the ability to, you know, aggressively move forward with our strategic priorities. And we know, I mean, what's so heartening about these conversations is that we're not like all in different directions, and most of the time, the limitations are staff capacity to carry forward our goals. And I think we're just at an inflection point in terms of where we are with climate and where we are with social justice and where we are in the collaboration that we're seeing in our social services and nonprofit sector, that if we invest a little bit more right now, it will pay off and it will help us create leadership and more capacity, I think, quicker than if we just kind of status quo because we're scared of, you know, the impending financial headwinds.
Well, I think the idea of the grant writer, especially with our, one of our institutions, the University of Iowa, I have several friends that work in various departments over there, and that is such a huge part of their practice. And they used to have, I'm not sure if they still do because I haven't talked to anybody about this in a while, but people who were like dedicated for like anybody in the university that would do the grant writing. So that would say to me, there's probably people in our community that would be qualified. It would know, you know, we'd actually have a leg up on other communities, maybe, you know, other non-university or non-college communities, finding people who have some experience and some skills in that area. And I agree, that's, that moves us towards things. So even if we, and I agree, getting some more of the community organizing sort of positions and see if we can work that into the budget. And even if it doesn't fit into the budget as aggressively as we'd like, if we have that really good grant writer and we were able to basically, some of those hopes and promises from the federal level come into fruition, we can always amend our, you know, we can add staff later in the year, right? So I mean, that's if grants become available. So I mean, I see that as maybe a path forward that with all the news we've been getting about our financial challenges, that that gives me a lot more hope than I think, you know, than doom and gloom, which is a nice feeling.
I think this is a great conversation that we're having. It's actually continuing the conversation that we had on the 7th of January. Because after Tracy Heishu had given her presentation, there was a lot of comments by this council, and it seemed like it was the, if we can figure out what are some of the ways that we can bolster up that department, it seemed like a lot of the answers that we need for this community outreach, community partnership, community involvement could come out of that. I think one of the things Jeff asked of us was, you know, to allow staff to just to kind of take our concerns and then get back to us. I will say that the last couple of weeks, as we all know, has been pretty busy here at the city, but I still think that that can take place. Now, one of the questions that I have is, you know, would it be beneficial for, between now and, you know, the next meeting, although we do have some time to change our budget or to figure out this piece, but, you know, is, would it be beneficial for us to give staff two weeks and then we have this discussion again, determine if we want maybe a committee of three to kind of meet with staff and kind of talk through some opportunities? Because we're, a lot of the things that was said on the 7th is being repeated today, which I think is great. And, but I also want to make sure that between now and the, when we need to pass this budget, that we have had opportunity to, you know, have a conversation with staff, make sure that if we need a special small group to work with staff to kind of, I think, vocalize a little more clearly what our hopes are. The vehicle for the funding, I think, you know, certainly staff can give us some options. We've heard some possible vehicles that the council can take. So what are thoughts on if we give staff two more weeks just to think about it and come back and give us some thoughts?
Just a quick, I was trying to find my notes. What's, and as part of this answer maybe, what's our set of deadlines we have coming up?
Yeah, we need to know your max property tax levy. So what I would say, just listening to you talk, I'm seeing focus on two positions. It's the neighborhood outreach position and it's the grant writer position that's articulated in the strategic plan but not proposed in my budget recommendation to you. If you want to move ahead with those two positions, you're probably looking at about $160,000, $175,000 of additional expenditures in the FY '24 budget. That's something that we could absorb without raising the tax levy. You just have to understand that that eats some of that capacity, some of that cushion, some of that reserve. And it also creates a more difficult situation should there be significant property tax reform pushed through. And, you know, usually if you go through a cost-cutting measure, you know, the kind of the general progression from a typical, how you'd handle that is you look at the discretionary non-labor expenses. We know there's not much there. Then you're going to be looking at what kind of vacant positions can you leave unfilled? Those vacant positions, you can't really control where they are at any given time. So sometimes that has a disproportionate impact on service levels or various operations. So I guess what I'm saying is if you're comfortable with the risk and you think the return to the community from adding one and a half more positions, we can absorb that in the budget. We're just going to be reducing some of that cushion that we have going forward that we've enjoyed for a while. It's not, it doesn't all go away. They're both positions that were proposed by staff. To me, they just didn't make the recommendation to you. If you're not comfortable with that, then you have to go through that exercise of do you want to cut something from the budget? Do you want to ask me to go and cut an equivalent amount of expense from the budget or identify a new revenue source? But I generally, I don't think there's another revenue source to offer up here. It's either going to be property taxes or living within the structure that we have now.
One very quick thing, and as a question more than anything, is I think I had mentioned to you that the possibility of like a long-term temp hire with a grant writer, essentially using a position as a pilot, right? And perhaps to use ARPA funds for that. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I just throw that out there as well if we're trying to consider, since we have some dollars.
Yeah, we could certainly look at a short-term solution. The challenge is you may not attract the best candidates because those candidates are going to want something more secure, particularly in this job market. They probably have no problem finding something more secure. So I would, I would say if we want to jump into that centralized grant management, grants position, let's go all in. And let's try to get the best person we can and hope that that return is there. I trust it will be. So I'd say let's do that. Maybe we can use our, maybe we use ARPA as part of the financial solution in the short term, but in making that commitment during the hiring process, I think we need to commit to a permanent hire.
In regards to the property tax, I know that Rachel Kilburg had given us, kind of walked us through some of that stuff. And also, we know what's happening at the state. We don't know exactly what yet, but they're having discussions about property tax. I know that, you know, we would have to make a decision really about the 31st of this month in order for us to set a public hearing for any proposed maximum property tax by the 7th of February. So my question is, and I'm not really suggesting that we increase the property tax or change it at this point, but I guess this is really to staff. Is there any benefit to us even looking at that? We know that things are coming. If we don't move now, could we be limited? You know, are there any, any things that we should probably think about now? And the other thing is if we're gonna, if we know that there's going to be some changes and decreases in our overall budget, you know, do we wait and then we do this huge hike? Or do we do these incremental hikes that we know are coming, almost inevitable? So I don't know if staff can talk to that and...
Well, I think it's hard to make these types of decisions based on speculation, and that's all we have right now. We have various property tax bills introduced, but we don't know what the end product's going to look like. So I always like to make decisions when we know what that, what that new reality is. So I would hesitate at this point to change our taxing strategy or to make drastic changes to the budget in anticipation of something. I think we move forward as we always do, and we make changes accordingly once legislation has passed. And we hope that we have the benefit of a year to make those changes or multiple years to make those changes, but know that there is a risk that it could be that we only have weeks to make a change. You just need to take comfort in knowing that we do have some reserves that can help provide that cushion should that short-term pain be thrust upon us in a quick manner.
I think kind of piggybacking off of the mayor's comments and maybe kind of picking up a thread that I put out there, maybe not perfectly clearly earlier, do we want to have some sort of a, we set this maximum levy rate, do we want to have, bump that up? I know that's not the, my expectation is to not have to use it. And if we, you know, just so we have that ability, if we find out between now and March 31st that we are going to get something that would require us to make some drastic cuts to services, that we at least have an option on the table? Or is that something that would cause more problems than it fixes? Or do we want to maybe just be thinking about that and, you know, maybe come back in two weeks and make a decision? I mean, is that a Plan B that we should have on deck and ready to go?
Knowing that the proposed legislation right now for the rollback is about 1.7 million, I think we can manage that without drastic cuts to services in the short term. So I personally don't see the need to increase just in case in this, in this manner. I would say let's stay the course. If those changes are thrust upon us, we can figure that out for this budget. Again, we've had a multimillion-dollar surplus the last few years in our budgets, and that's partly because we budget conservatively, right? I use the example, we budget for 100% of the salaries that are on the books, but we know in any organization you have turnover, and when you have turnover, you're not paying salary while there's a transition at employees. So that's where we get a lot of our, we get a lot of our cushion in our savings. I think in this case, we could, we could manage it, not to say it wouldn't be without pain, but we could manage it. I just, I hesitate to set that public hearing, make that announcement to the community that we're looking at this major rate hike and for the state stuff to fizzle out and it looks like we, you know, maybe we were jumping the gun or had different motives.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Question for you. So if we were to do an increase solely just to, you know, recoup the 1.7 million, what kind of increase would that look like compared to what we have proposed now?
I don't know that we could fully, you know, make that up. We generally say it's about $50,000 per penny on the tax levy. But again, that 1.7 hits us a little bit differently, right? There's about 1.2 million to the general fund, some are going to hit the transit fund. So I don't think I'm prepared to kind of tell you exactly what that impact is right now, but you can generally assume about $50,000 equates to one penny on your tax rate.
Also, it is 5:47. I'm going to pause us at this point. We kind of gave indirectly, but maybe we gave Jeff some marching orders for those one and a half positions to come back next time.
Can we say two? Two full-time?
I think what you mentioned was a half.
No, I said the current is half-time and we need to...
And I think he was saying one and a half to make it...
I was saying go full-time, but it's...
So we would have one, I want to see us have at least one and a half FTE in that position. So adding a full-time and then the full-time grant writer.
Yep, I got that.
Okay.
Yes.
But we need to add two then.
Two FTEs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, the organizers. Or the community outreach, not...
One community outreach, one grant writer.
Right.
Correct.
So just to clarify then, because I gave you a rough estimate off the cuff of 150 to 175, I think I said something about that, and we're probably looking at 225. to 175, I think I said something about that. And we're probably looking at 225. Just add another about 50,000 to that estimate if you're looking at another half-time.
All right. So we'll get updates February 5th, I think.
Well, but you're going to proceed ahead with the setting of the maximum tax levy as staff has proposed in the budget. And then come your next council meeting at the work session, you want some information from me on thoughts on those two positions essentially?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. All right. If nothing else, we'll be adjourned for now and see you at 6:00 PM. All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the City of Iowa City, January 24, 2023. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Bergus.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Armson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Want to welcome everyone into your city hall and everyone that is online as well. We're going to start with item number two, Proclamations. 2A is the Emma Goldman's Clinic 50th Year Anniversary. And this will be read by Councilor Laura Bergus.
Whereas, following the Supreme Court's landmark Roe versus Wade decision in 1973, dozens of Iowa City women came together to open the Emma Goldman Clinic for Women in September of the same year. And whereas, the Emma Goldman Clinic was the first woman-owned and operated clinic in the Midwest and one of only four in the country. And whereas, the Emma Goldman Clinic is a leader in reproductive health care, expanding the health care options for tens of thousands of people. And whereas, despite facing numerous challenges in the past 50 years, including firebombing, bomb threats, and the regular presence of picketers and protesters outside its front door, the Emma Goldman Clinic remains committed to its work to provide community-based feminist health care. And whereas, regardless of the continuing challenges to reproductive choice and bodily autonomy in this country, the Emma Goldman Clinic will continue to serve the Iowa City community and to work to create a world in which reproductive health care is recognized as an essential human right. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim 2023 as Emma Goldman Clinic's 50th Anniversary Year in Iowa City and recognize and appreciate the Emma Goldman Clinic for its long and proud 50-year history of providing respectful, client-centered health care, and encourage the residents of our community to participate in the clinic's celebratory and educational anniversary events, starting with its Choice Event later this month. And here to accept this proclamation is Francine Thompson, Executive Director of the Emma Goldman Clinic.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Teague, council members, I want to take this opportunity to thank you on behalf of the Emma Goldman Clinic Board and staff for this proclamation and acknowledgement of the clinic's 50th anniversary. And it starts out this month as pretty bittersweet with the reversal of Roe. But we still plan to celebrate because it is really an accomplishment that we have been here in this community and continuously operating for the last 50 years. And so we appreciate your support. We thank you that. You've always been supportive in this community of the clinic. We plan to be here for another 50 years. And if you're interested at all in celebrating with us, we're going to kick off the 50th event this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 at Hotel Vitro. You're able to get information about the event on our website, or if you call the clinic and ask to speak to Megan McCray. And so I just want to say that reproductive health care and including abortion are human rights. They're fundamental human rights. And we are so appreciative that the council and the community of Iowa City has continued to be supportive of the Emma Goldman Clinic. And we thank you.
Thank you. Always think of the WWE, What Would Emma Do? All right. Item number 2B is Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. This will be read by Mayor Pro Tim, Megan Alter.
Whereas, human trafficking is the exploitation of a person through force, fraud, or coercion. It is found in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, and debt bondage. And whereas, one of the world's fastest-growing crimes is the buying and selling of people, whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to isolation, economic hardship, increase in abuse in online activity. Communities in eastern Iowa continue to see an increase in the number of people victimized, with Chains Interrupted serving over 100 survivors in our area in 2022. And whereas, prosecutions for this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom and fuels organized crime, have decreased, with only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking in 2021. No convictions were obtained in Iowa's state appellate courts in 2021. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the misdiagnosis of its indicators. And whereas, every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas, the City of Iowa City joins Chains Interrupted, Mercy Medical Center, and St. Luke's Hospital in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of January to be Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month in Iowa City, and encourage all of our residents to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work toward solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at 319-364-0222. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888. And accepting this proclamation is Teresa Davidson, the founder of Chains Interrupted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'm Teresa Davidson. I'm the Anti-Human Trafficking Coordinator at Mercy Medical Center in Cedar Rapids and the co-founder and CEO of Chains Interrupted, which is a nonprofit that fights against human trafficking in eastern Iowa and beyond. The proclamation talked about St. Luke's and Mercy Medical Center and Chains Interrupted, but we also partner heavily with the Johnson County Coalition, the University of Iowa, and Mercy Hospital in Iowa City. The proclamation also talked about how communities... The proclamation also talked about how community citizens can make a difference, and I would just encourage you that traffickers will be targeting the vulnerable. They're going to be targeting the vulnerable in your circle. So what I would suggest is that you look within your own circle. Look at the children in your life, at the vulnerable people that maybe don't have friend groups or are bullied or have low self-esteem or are marginalized in some way, and reach out to them first. Reach out to them because traffickers are going to be reaching out to them. And that is how we can make a difference as a community, within our own sphere of influence. I do apologize because we have a group of people here that accepted this proclamation, and we do have to jet because we're going to the Correville City Council Meeting as well. But, so, please excuse our rudeness, and thank you so much for this.
Thank you. And because it does take a village, I'm going to ask all of those that is a part of this partnership to stand so we can recognize each of you. Thank you so much. Moving on to our consent agenda, items three through seven. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, done.
Second, Burgess.
And anyone from the public like to address a topic that is within our consent agenda? If so, please come forth. There is a sign-in sheet here at the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Armson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're on to item number eight, which is our community comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. If you would like to speak, please come forth to the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand. We'll give everyone up to three minutes to speak. Please come forth, welcome. Please sign in.
Already did.
All right, please state your name and the city you're from.
First, I want to say thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Mark Gaynor. I'm an Iowa City homeowner, business owner, father of three, and grandfather of four and counting. I'm speaking this evening because my family, our neighbors, and friends are concerned about gun violence in our city. On Saturday, January 14th, my two adult daughters and my 11-year-old granddaughter went shopping on the pedestrian mall. It was supposed to be a fun, carefree outing. Instead, it turned into a terrifying experience they'll never forget. Moments after they had walked into a store, they heard multiple gunshots outside on the mall. Seeking safety, they locked themselves in a bathroom stall and huddled together, fearing for their lives. Fortunately, thanks to eyewitnesses, fast calls to 911, and the timely response of our police force, no one was injured or killed, and police arrested a suspect and recovered a gun. But the reality is that except for lucky timing, the outcome could have been much worse. Except for lucky timing, Iowa City could have joined the growing list of American communities devastated by gun violence. That seems bound to happen someday, especially with more guns than people in America, reduced funding for mental health treatment, and Iowa's increasingly lax gun laws. It's a perfect storm that's brewing, we can see it coming. In the Pedmall area alone, there have been several shootings in recent years. In Des Moines yesterday, two students were killed at a charter school. And that's not to mention the dozens of mass shootings we've seen already across the nation in the first three weeks this year. The question is, what can we, as a community, do to avoid such tragedies beyond what we are doing already? How can we proactively support law enforcement's ongoing and noble efforts to minimize gun violence? I know this is a complex issue, but if any community is equipped to tackle it, it's Iowa City. During the height of the pandemic, Mayor Teague, you and the City Council took bold action to protect public health by issuing a mask mandate. Today, Iowa City has another opportunity to lead by example, by highlighting its commitment to gun safety in a very public way, and by pulling together, perhaps, a community coalition to find new ways to protect our residents, our businesses, and the thousands of people who visit here every year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Hi, Council, Keaton Zaimit with USG from Iowa City. We just have three announcements here. Spring semester began last week, and then on MLK, Martin Luther King Junior Day. And throughout last week, the university and students alike engaged in Day of Service in recognition of the human rights work of Martin Luther King. And then we have had a change of venue for the town hall due to issues with microphones. The venue will now be held in the old Capitol Building in the Senate Chambers. Everything else is the same, and the meeting will begin at 7:00. And we're looking forward to working with you, and the formal agenda should be sent out sometime this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one in person or online, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is Planning and Zoning Matters, 9A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Southwest District. Resolution to amend the Southwest District Plan, a part of Iowa City's Comprehensive Plan, to update background information and to facilitate development that follows form-based principles in the Rarit South Subarea. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome Kirk Lehman.
Thank you. Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner with Development Services, here to talk about the Southwest District Plan update that we are proposing tonight. So I just wanted to start by talking about background in the Comprehensive Plan and how it fits into the city generally. So Comprehensive Plan is the policy document that directs future growth, development, and change within Iowa City. It does so by creating a broad vision for the kind of community that Iowa City wants to be and then provides some specific recommendations for how we can reach that. It is a living document, it changes over time, so you have amendments such as this, where we look at potential changes based on changes in circumstances, based on changes in policy, and we update it accordingly. Now, this is a policy document, so it's not regulation. The regulation is done through the zoning code, through the subdivision, but this is what guides that regulation. So it's an important part of our regulatory framework, though it is not regulatory itself. So our most recent Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2013, which is called IC 2030. Within it, it divides the city into 10 individual planning districts. So tonight, we're looking at the Southwest District Plan, which was originally adopted in 2002, so it's more than 20 years old at this point. But that Southwest Planning District is located south of Melrose Avenue, north of Highway 1, west of the Iowa River, over to the Growth Area. Specifically, we're looking west of 218 and south of Rarit Road within that area because that's a largely undeveloped area, and we're expecting sewer to come under this year. So with that, it would allow some urban development, and we're proposing that we reevaluate the future for this area prior to that development occurring. Now, this has been a relatively lengthy planning process, where we started this in winter of 2020, started with looking at the background information that's 20 years old, did some initial public outreach efforts, which included a survey with 168 respondents, as well as some focus group meetings with approximately 40 respondents. You have those summaries within your agenda packet tonight. But we did pause from April of 2021 to January of 2022 as the Carson Farms annexation came before council, was indefinitely deferred and then pulled. So staff was waiting for more direction on what to expect within this area. But after we were able to get some more direction, we came back, developed a framework with Opticos, who helped us with the South Planning District. And then staff took that framework and developed the plan, brought it before the public on September 1st at a public open house where we had 117 participants. And in the meanwhile, we also did have additional meetings throughout this process with around 19 individuals. After that public open house, we took the feedback we received, updated our planning document, and published it on October 19th. After that, we took it to Planning and Zoning Commission for additional feedback, and now we are before you today to consider adoption. So throughout this process, we did try to engage as many folks as possible. We've maintained a contact stakeholder email address list with 230 email addresses, so we've been able to get ahold of quite a few people. And you also do have quite a few items of correspondence in your packet as well. But throughout that process, you know, you, after you have enough meetings, you start hearing some recurring themes. So some of the main themes that we heard throughout this public input process was first, this area looks like it's suitable for new neighborhoods as Iowa City continues to grow and develop. Those should have a mix of housing types, but be consistent with existing development. Now, another big item that people were very interested in were public services and destinations. So there's strong desire for parks and trails within this area, incorporating new schools, especially as Weber Elementary is at max capacity. So we had many conversations with the Iowa City Community School District, and then ensuring strong emergency services and that there are some neighborhood destinations or commercial uses that are close to residents, since otherwise you have to cross 218 to get there. Another topic that came up consistently was tied to transportation, especially connectivity within this area and between this area and the rest of Iowa City. So because this is west of 218, there's only three roads that reach into this area. That includes Melrose to the north, Rarit Avenue, which is the primary route that most neighborhoods get to this area, and then Highway 1 to the south. However, there's not really any good north-south connections between any of these, so that's a really important point that came up throughout this, where there's a need to improve that connectivity within this area. But as part of that, there's also traffic concerns. So Rarit Road being the primary access point, lots of concern that if there's not Slothauer Extension or an extension to the south, that that would lead to lots of traffic on Rarit Road. And then also with Kitty Lee Road, which is an existing cul-de-sac, our future land use map does show that as a through street as part of that connectivity. So you also have several items about that. At the moment, the city is in the process of identifying what improvements might be part of improving that road if that were to become a through street. And then finally, there are concerns about involuntary annexation, since much of this area is not yet within the city. So it would need to be annexed. The city's policy is not to annex involuntarily, but that is a major concern for folks living within the county. Which led us to develop a planning framework based around many of these concepts. So looking at things like compact and orderly development with a mix of housing types, looking at form-based land use categories that can create an appropriate transition, looking at neighborhood centers that serve basic needs in addition to strong public services within this area, and an interconnected and aligned street network that provides safe transportation and a mobility of transportation options. And then finally, looking at neighborhood amenities, especially parks, and then preserving sensitive features and managing stormwater at a regional level. So these, this planning framework was used to help develop a concept for the area. That being said, we did retain the planning principles from the original 2002 plan. So those are carried through. Now, in terms of the changes that we're proposing tonight, there's two general tracks of changes that we're doing. First is to update the background information, that's nearly two decades old. So that includes things like referencing the Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2013, including a description of this planning process, revising texts and maps to reflect recent changes in policy, such as the 2021 fringe area, and then also mentioning infrastructure improvements that have occurred over time. So things like the overhaul of the transit system that were recently completed, new roads that were constructed, redevelopment of riverfront crossings, those sorts of things. But again, we did retain those core planning principles. Now, the other and more substantial changes that we saw for the Southwest Plan are tied to the Rarit South Subarea. Again, that's the area south of Rarit Road, west of 218, north of Highway 1 over to the fringe area. It's one of four subareas within the Southwest District Plan, but we only looked at this particular concept. So we did retain many original aspects to the plan, including those planning principles, like I said. But some of the primary changes that we made were to ensure that the future land use map covers the full subarea for this plan, whereas the previous one had a different growth boundary. We add in new neighborhood centers throughout to ensure that there's neighborhood destinations within walking distance, looking at utilizing form-based land use categories similar to those that we use in the South District, and then incorporating those new items into the future land use map and thoroughfare maps as well. So all of this together, one of the goals is to help facilitate the use of our form-based zones that we adopted for the South District within this growth area of Iowa City. But it is a relatively large area, so it's 1,800 acres within the full growth area. But just wanted to look at this prior to a development actually occurring as sewer extends under 218. So I did just want to pop up the 2002 concept, since it's helpful to see where we got to based on where we came from. What you see before you is the 2002 concept. You'll notice that it is a smaller portion of the area, but we do retain many similar aspects to this plan. So it's still a largely residential area. There's a large stormwater lake and park in the northeast corner that's being proposed. And there is still neighborhood centers that are in this area in the northeast corner. But the differences are tied to the way that we distribute these uses, the way that we use future land use categories, and again, we extend it to the full area. So there's additional neighborhood centers as well. Now, before we get to the future land use map, I did just want to touch briefly on form-based land use as a concept as well, since it can be confusing, and if you're not familiar with it, it's helpful to go over. So land use is the principle by which we allocate where we would want to see different uses of land at different locations. With conventional land use categories, it is strictly based off of use. So you say this area should have homes, this area should have shops, this area should have industry, and that's that. It's a relatively simple concept. But with form-based land use, we look beyond those individual uses and look to the full public realm that makes a great place. So we're looking at things like the street network, which is why there's a thoroughfare plan as part of this. We're looking at things like frontage types, we're looking at things like allowing a larger mix of uses within these areas. So we're not so much focused on a commercial area, but we might be focused on a main street where there's a lot more other concepts that come into what comprises a main street versus a commercial area. Again, we use the same form-based land use designations that are used in the South District that was updated in 2021. And in terms of the way that these districts are organized, it's based on a natural-to-urban transect where the lower numbers are the more natural areas and the higher numbers are the more urban areas. So T1, for example, is completely natural area. T6 is the urban core, that's the highest transect that there is, downtown Iowa City. In this case, we're on the edge of the city, so we're looking at T3 suburban transects and T4 general urban transects. So this is the proposed future land use map included in your packet. Again, I'll go through in a minute how we organize, what we organize, but I did just want to, again, reorient you so you can see Rarit Road to the north, Highway 218 on the east, you can see Highway 1 on the south, and then the Growth Area to the west. Again, we're looking at the transect 3 and transect 4. And you'll see some of those similar features from the original concept, including that stormwater lake and park in the northeast. You'll also see a commercial area in the northeast that's similar to what's there. One thing that is a little different is that an existing commercial area to the east and south by Highway 1 does retain its original land use categories, so that is commercial and office commercial, but the rest does use those form-based categories. One other thing I wanted to note, that this is a future land use map. So as part of a policy document, what you see is not necessarily what you get. The way that development occurs is that this presents a vision of what might occur in this area in the future based on the goals that are identified in the plan. However, the way that it actually looks would be determined by zoning and subdivisions and development as it comes before you. So it's those individual property owners making those decisions, and then it's a matter of being consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So that doesn't mean it's a master plan, it won't match this exactly, but it would be consistent with it. So you could expect that this would change, especially as you learn more about things like sensitive features, you learn more things about topography and accounting for some of those other characteristics on individual sites as they come before you. So first, I wanted to talk about the organization of the transect 3 or the suburban transect. You'll notice at the top, those are, we have two general kind of sub-districts. We have a neighborhood edge and then a neighborhood general. Where neighborhood edge is located largely around the periphery or places where we have existing single-family homes. existing single-family homes. It would allow things like a single-family duplex cottage courts, somewhat similar to what's allowed in RS zones currently. But the bulk of the area is T3 neighborhood general, so that allows those uses in addition to some small-scale multifamily and some smaller town home development as well. So the T3 neighborhood edge is kind of that rose color on the on the edge of the district, and the T3 neighborhood general is the lavender color that kind of makes up the bulk of the district. In addition, we have our neighborhood centers where you start to see T4 or general urban transects. Those are primarily located in neighborhood centers scattered throughout the subarea. You'll also see some along single-loaded streets where there's development on one side of the street and open space on the other side of the street with the idea being you need to compensate to make those streets actually viable to be built. In terms of the sub-districts within T4, you have neighborhood small, which is used as a transition from T3, so you're still looking at house-scale buildings, two and a half stories, but you do have more multifamily uses. As you get more towards the bulk of the neighborhood centers, you're talking about neighborhood medium areas. So this is where you start to get in three and a half stories, some larger multifamily buildings maybe up to 16 units. And then you have the center or the core of these neighborhood centers, so that allows some denser multifamily, it allows some non-residential uses. And there are two types of those. There's the T4 Main Street, which strongly encourages non-residential uses, and then you also have an open sub-district which would allow non-residential uses more widely, but they don't necessarily encourage them as strongly. So it's possible there, but it would be the policy direction to put it in places with Main Street. So you can see those laid out here where the yellow circles would be the areas where non-residential uses are allowed. Those red circles would be where they are strongly encouraged. And I show those circles primarily to illustrate walking distances. So this the solid circle is approximately a five-minute walk, that dashed circle is approximately a 10-minute walk. So you can see that most of these residential areas are within walking distance of some sort of neighborhood center that would allow non-residential uses. And the goal is to have destinations within reach of those residents. And in addition to things that might serve your basic needs, we also include parks throughout. So in the northeast, you'll see a cluster where there's a regional park shown with a rec center and a potential future elementary school site. And then more central to the district, you'll see another cluster where there's another future school site that could accommodate an elementary school and possibly a junior high, in addition to a fire station which we know is in need for this area and another public park. That being said, there are also private open spaces shown throughout. Some of those are floodplains, some of those are shown at the center of neighborhood areas to to illustrate a desire for gathering spaces within some of these neighborhood centers. Those would not be publicly owned, but it would be something that we would like to see within some of these areas. And then we also have the thoroughfare map, which is a component of the future land use map that shows street typologies that might fit with the adjacent land use categories that are shown. So you'll see that neighborhood streets are the bulk of the street network, but we do show some more primary streets through the area that provide connectivity. We show multiple routes through the area with an idea being that you can disperse traffic, and with less traffic, you improve safety, you can improve throughput and improve the livability of these areas. In some cases, we reoriented from existing right-of-way such as Meyer, but the goal is to really create a really intuitive way of getting around this subarea so it's easy to navigate and safe. You'll also notice, again, that it uses a pretty strict block network in the way that it's laid out right now. Again, this is a future land use map, so we showed it that way because we want to really emphasize the fact that connectivity is important to this subarea, and we want to make sure that there are multiple routes to get to your destinations. Now, with regards to traffic concerns, I also wanted to emphasize we showed multiple north-south connections because that's really important between Rarit Road and the highway. But even areas outside of this, such as Slothhour Road to the north, providing a connection up to Melrose, that's another important component of development within this area. And again, Kitty Lee Road is also labeled on this map, so you can see aware what is currently a cul-de-sac is being shown as a through street on this. Whether or not that occurs would depend on on adjacent development, on additional connections, those sorts of things. I also did want to point out future Highway 965 on the west side of this subarea, which is would be a major arterial similar to Highway One. That would go all the way up to Coralville. It's a long-term transportation plan that's that's within our long-range plan, but it's unfunded, so it is truly a long-term project, but I did want to highlight that for you. And then also the fact that there are alleys that are shown along some of these major streets where we don't want direct street access, so places like Highway One, future 965, and then also Rarit Road. And then one more thing I wanted to highlight is that we do show a connection of streets or pedestrian passages throughout this area. Those are essentially trails that would be private, but we really want to illustrate a desire to connect parks, schools, and neighborhood centers using a pedestrian network that would really encourage alternative transportation than just vehicular travel. In terms of the way that you might see this area area develop, it's largely based on topography and infrastructure. So with the sewer service brought under 218, that would allow most of the east and northeast portion of this site to develop. Beyond that, it would require additional infrastructure investments. So to the west or to the northwest, that would develop as sewers brought under 218, brought over, and then you'd need a lift station. To the south, you'd need a lift station to the south. To the southwest, it's within our long-term service area, but we don't have a specific plan. So that would be sort of the last area to develop within this. And in terms of evaluating comp plan amendments, we use two general criteria, one, which is that circumstances have changed or additional information has come to light such that it's in the public interest, and then two, that it's compatible with other policies or provisions of the comprehensive plan and district plans. And in terms of circumstances changing, the existing plan's 20 years old. So there's been lots of changes over time, including more than 12,000 new residents since 2000. We expect another 19,000 residents by 2040, and as part of that, most of the land east of 218 within the southwest planning area has already developed at this point, and portions of it that are even redeveloping, including rural front crossings. As part of that, we've also made substantial infrastructure improvements in this area, and putting sewer under 218 is another major infrastructure improvement. But at the same time, annexations have decreased within Iowa City. So we need to be looking at some of these growth areas where we would, that we would expect to help accommodate some of this future population growth. And then in terms of regulation and policy, since 2000, we've had some substantial changes, including an updated zoning and subdivision code. We've adopted green, excuse me, we've adopted form-based zoning districts for greenfield sites in 2021. We've updated the comprehensive plan in 2013 and the fringe area in 2021. And then we've also increasingly focused on climate action adaptation and social justice and racial equity. So just to give you an idea of some developments that have occurred since that time, in 2000, we were at approximately 62,000 folks in Iowa City, and now we're closer to 75,000. Areas in yellow are residential developments that have occurred, and areas in red are commercial developments. So there's been some substantial development within this area, and we're looking at this to accommodate future growth. And I also wanted to highlight, in terms of changing circumstances, our increased focus on climate action and social justice and racial equity, specifically by looking at conventional planning versus form-based planning. So within conventional planning, you're often looking at single-use districts. We often see low-density districts, which together increase greenhouse gas emissions because as you're driving from a residence to commercial area, you you increase your miles that you're driving, and it reinforces that auto-oriented pattern of development, and more cars on the road means more congestion. With a form-based planning approach, we're really looking at creating compact neighborhoods that are somewhat self-sustained, a place where you can have different housing types that accommodate you at different points in your life cycle, that can be easily traversed by foot, bike, and bus in addition to cars. And in terms of social justice and racial equity, we look primarily at housing diversity and housing affordability to accommodate a range of of folks living within a neighborhood. With conventional planning, it has historically been used to support racial and class segregation, especially as you get to exclusionary practices such as single-family-only zones, large minimum lot sizes, which had worked with other policies that were historically used to to segregate folks. And even in Iowa City, we had racially restricted covenants until they were made illegal. Eighty-one percent of residential land in Iowa City is zoned single-family, of which over half is zoned low-density. So we're not immune to some of these original conventional planning issues either. But with form-based planning, we make an effort to try to increase housing choice, which will hopefully also increase a mix of price points within a neighborhood. And it's not a silver bullet, but it might mitigate one barrier to providing more affordable housing options and increasing equity within Iowa City. And then in terms of compatibility with the comprehensive plan, a lot of the land uses that we consider are pretty similar to what currently exists, with the exception of we remove large lot rural residential as a building type, as we expect areas to annex into the city voluntarily and redevelop voluntarily. But the difference is we organize it using those form-based principles, so a greater mix of housing types throughout, rather than segregating townhomes from single-family duplex from other uses as you see in the 2002 future land use map. Again, there are some other changes as well, but that's one of the large ones as it relates to land use. But it also does align well with other goals within the comprehensive plan, within the original southwest district plan, and then with other city policies such as the City Council Strategic Plan, Climate Action Adaptation Plan, and the Black Lives Matter and Systemic Racism Resolution. And as it relates to plan goals, I did want to just highlight the comprehensive plan and existing southwest district plan goals that are being implemented through this. And those southwest district plan goals are actually from the Rarit South Subarea section already. So like I said, we retained those original concepts, but it includes things like mix of housing types, pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods, neighborhood commercial and preserving open space, as well as an emphasis on accessible parks. So based on this analysis, staff does believe that those two approval criteria are met by the proposed analysis. In terms of next steps, if this is adopted, it would still go through substantial zoning process. So areas that are outside of the city would need to be annexed into the city. That goes before planning and zoning and council. And then they would also need to be rezoned, presumably to a form-based zone, which would be compliant with form-based land use districts. And then you would also have subdivision preliminary plat, which would go to P and Z and council, and then the final plat, which would just come before council, and that also includes, as part of our greenfield form-based zones, a neighborhood plan that would show those uses. After that, it would be the the staff review process of site plan review and building permit review. If not adopted, this area can still develop under the current, the current comprehensive plan that's been adopted for the area, but it would just follow different policies than are incorporated in this comp plan amendment. Based on our view of this relevant criteria, staff did recommend that the commission approve the southwest plan amendment to upgrade the background information and to, and the section on the Rarit South Subarea to facilitate development according to form-based standards. And at their December 7th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did concur with staff opinion and voted six to zero to recommend approval. So with that, that is staff's presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
This is a fantastic presentation, and thank you for the contextualization and the background. It really helps give a full sense of that area that, you know, there's a great number of people who live on the west side, but to see sort of how this would build out is, and with such deliberation, is really, really helpful. My questions are kind of specific regarding the two pieces of correspondence that were included. And it seems like during your presentation, one person noted that there really needed to be more access points than simply, or, right? And and it seems to me that that was taken into account that through one of the many maps that you were showing about the different ways in which particularly north-south to to really improve connectivity and egress in and out of the area. So am I correct in that assumption that you addressed that one criticism or suggestion that there really needed to be that kind of infrastructure put into place prior to people just going and building homes?
Yeah, that that's part of the the plan as we see it. The bigger challenge is as development comes in, it's gonna, it's not gonna come in all at once, so that's where the challenge comes in, in terms of north-south connectivity.
Okay. I think that's it, actually. Thank you.
Kirk, I had a question, just how you were hopefully stating that the basic planning principles from 2002 and that the 2002 plan kind of carried forward. And also, at the end of your presentation, you were talking about the, how some historic planning principles, I think, were problematic in terms of our current goals. So can you just kind of reconcile those for us in terms of maybe what carried through from the 20-year-old plan versus what might have changed?
Sure. So the aspects that we primarily retained were related to the actual principles, which, you know, like I said, are things like a mix of housing types. They're they're principles that are similar to what form-based zones are meant to accomplish. The the things that were changed were the way that land use categories were designated, which tends to restrict uses more than you might see in a form-based land use category. So that's really where we tried to strike the balance. And in a lot of ways, the the feedback that we received throughout this process was similar to the feedback from 2002. You know, many folks who live out there have lived out there a long time and participated in both processes. So those voices are still loud and clear, and I think a lot of them still align with some of these changes that we're proposing. So that's why we retained those, but we did modify, especially the future land use map, the concept, the way that that's structured.
Thank you.
I have questions related to the mixed housing types. Naturally, I think affordable, you're, naturally, I think you think affordable housing will be a part of that, but there is no percentage requirement for affordable housing, like in our Riverfront Cross, and we have 10%. And then whenever we do an annexation into the city, there's a requirement there. Can you speak a little bit to maybe the, how you anticipate affordable housing will naturally occur?
Sure. So it's mostly not through this planning document, but like you stated, annexations, we do have a policy that 10% of units be affordable according to our policies. So that would apply to any land that's being annexed from the county. In addition, the form-based zones that we would anticipate be applied to this area do have provisions that incentivize affordable housing. So it includes things like waivers from various standards, it allows some increased density if you provide some affordable housing within the units. So those two items paired together, that's really how we're hoping could create more affordable housing, especially within a new-growth area. But that being said, new construction, it is always difficult to provide affordable housing. So another component is just providing housing types where it's not all single-family homes, but you might have a building that's the size of a single-family home, but instead of having one unit, it has four units. And so smaller square footage means that, on the whole, it's a more affordable unit. So those things together are how we're hoping to encourage affordable housing within this area.
Thank you. I'll make comments later when we have comment time. Thank you. Any more questions for Kirk?
I do, actually, I'm sorry. And you can just give a short answer because it could be a rabbit hole. What kind of authority or ownership does the municipality have once this is, let's say it passes, or we can look to the south district, which already has a form-based code? And I know that there, like, as you said, there's incentives for developers as well as some standards of how we want things to look and whatnot, right, to be able to build. And there's currently discussion at the state level about taking that control away. So what happens in a scenario like that? What happens to these plans? And a short answer is fine, I realize this could become a large philosophical.
In terms of state legislation? Well, you know, as planners, we have to plan under the laws that we have, so that is the way that this plan is constructed. You never know what changes would be made or if legislation is even passed, so I can't really speak to that any further. I don't know if Jeff has anything to add other than that. I mean, you can't legislate, or you, yeah, you can't make plans based on what you expect, you have to.
A hundred percent. I was just wondering, and sort of a, doesn't matter, I'll stop. Thank you.
And I apologize, I might have missed this. What kind of timeline are you thinking then, as far as the beginning and the ending of this development?
Sure. So development could begin as soon as sewer is brought under 218. We've had some folks within the county who are interested in annexing, the Carson Farms annexation had already come before the city at one point, and we had talked with with those folks during this process as well. In terms of outside of that initial area that can be serviced by sewer under 218, it would depend on infrastructure investment, it would depend on development interest. So, you know, this area could develop really quickly, and and there's demand for more growth in this area, and then it would occur sooner or be prioritized sooner. Or it could be, you know, maybe this area develops slower than we expect, or we have a recession and that affects home building. a recession and that affects home building, you know, you never quite know. So in terms of the areas outside of that immediate area, that would be a longer time horizon, with the longest time horizon being to the southwest, where we don't know exactly where those lift stations would need to go. So that's kind of the timeline. Generally, our planning timeline is anywhere from 20 years to 40 years. But we wanted to ensure that we incorporate the full area, even though it's a really large area, because we have had issues in the past where we say, this area is for future development, and plans can sometimes languish until a developer is interested, and then at that time, everyone's surprised as to what happens. So this provides more certainty as the way that development may occur in the future. Its development timeline is most likely longer, on the longer end of that, because of those substantial investments that are needed.
Kirk, have you had any discussions about power, you know? It seems to me the next, some of the next challenges we're facing, I mean, I love the evolution from, you know, conventional zoning to form-based code, and now we have, you know, looking forward, questions about how do we generate power through a non-fossil fuel use by way of solar and wind? Local food production as an alternative to everything being trucked in from somewhere else? Are those aspects of future development, which, you know, if we can localize those two issues in proximity to this development, ideally, have those discussions been taking place in any way?
So those discussions have occurred with regards to the zoning code and the way that we actually regulate specific developments. We do have the ability to have community gardens in a form-based code district, which is not the case in some of our more conventional zoning districts, so that's a positive. In terms of long-range planning, it is an important part of our regulations, but it hasn't been incorporated directly into this.
Where is the County Farm in relation to this? It's fairly close, isn't it?
Yeah, it's north of the neighborhoods that are directly north on RARE Road.
Okay. So that, in effect, could potentially be a land use that could be of value to this district?
Yep, and they were a stakeholder that we did engage as part of this, too, though it is outside of the district.
Kirk, I have a question just about the, it's very helpful understanding probably a long time horizon, but wanting to plan as best we can to give some indication of what we would expect or hope for in this area. I was just curious about the, maybe intensity isn't the right word, but that neighborhood edge along the highway, and then also kind of the future Highway 965. When I think of the larger transportation areas like that, I would think that it'd be higher intensity rather than lower intensity. Can you just speak to that?
Sure. Part of it is tied to existing land uses that are there. So a lot of those we maintained as their existing land uses, and that's how we see it in the future. As these planning documents evolve, you know, we're looking at this 20 years from the last time we looked at it. 20 years, maybe that vision will evolve in the future as development interests change, as transportation structure or transportation networks are developed. So it is a living document. At this time, we're showing that as neighborhood edge, because that's what's there.
Okay. Thank you.
Does Iowa DOT ever, I'm not familiar with the use of sound walls. Is that something that is ever considered by Iowa DOT when we see residential up against freeways, construction?
I can't speak to that specifically. Typically, we do engage the DOT at the development process stage, though, rather than at this initial stage. So especially when you're looking at numbers of lanes and things, I assume that's when you would look at those sorts of improvements. And with 218, there is a sound buffer requirement, so we do show a mixture of open space and commercial, and that sound buffer is for residential uses. So that's something that's been incorporated in this future land use map as well.
Can you speak to future concerns about annexation? I know we were talking about how the city's processes generally, you know, we want consensual annexation. I know we have a pretty decent read on a lot of the folks that are in the area right now, but what is your forward-looking perspective on that?
Well, it would be a matter of, as someone is interested in annexing to the city, that would be the time that we would consider annexation. Like I said, we know that there are some property owners that are interested in annexing. We know that there are some property owners that aren't. But, you know, as circumstances change for families, we've had some communications with families where, you know, their kids aren't interested in taking over a farm. That's where we see a lot of these things change. But really, it's a matter of, we will evaluate the proposals that come before us, and that's really when we make those annexation determinations.
Now, will there be, will the annexation, the 10%, be in addition to really falling under this new plan? Or the 10% goes away?
Which 10%?
Affordable housing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be part of, anywhere within Iowa City that, or that's being annexed to Iowa City would be subject to that 10% affordable housing requirement.
Maybe, Kirk, on the map, you could just show what part is currently in the city limits and what isn't.
So I'm going to use the transportation map, because this is probably the easiest way to do it. You can see some of the property lines very, very faintly. This line right here is roughly the city limit. You can't see my mouse.
Oh, there it is.
There we are. It's roughly this line right here. So that's roughly where the city limits are. So the vast, vast majority of this area is outside of city limits currently. I don't know a better way to describe it than that, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. In person, please welcome. Please state your name and the city you're from.
Hi, I'm Judy Foal from Iowa City. Sorry, I have laryngitis. Regarding this new addition, everything is related to the sewer going under the interstate. I'm the, been president of my neighborhood for over 30 years. We're on Abbey Lane. Last spring, well, I guess, anyway, twice in May and July, we've had open meetings talking about that to get the sewer line there, they're going to have to tear up Abbey Lane, move the sewer line from between our sidewalk and house, where it's parallel, and put it down the center of Abbey. We've worked that out, we've understood what's going on. And suddenly in December, after you've made your strategic plans about reducing cement areas, maintenance and things, we now are finding that Abbey Lane is going to be reduced eight feet narrower. We have a concern about that. Abbey is really a parking area for people going to Kiwanis Park, because there's only a few spots off of TEG. There's things that are going on at the park, there's the gardens that people get from the city, and that's where they park and go get their tools to it. It's also a place where people bike-ride through Kiwanis Park, through Willow Creek, and they come through us, rather than having to go up and over the hill by Roar at Mormon Trek. So it really helps to have it stay that wider street. The other thing is, when the street was put in initially, since they thought it was going to connect through to Sunset before, anyway, before we got the street, Mormon Trek widened and out to the highway and annexed and lights and all that that we worked on. So before that, it became a wider street, and it stops just from Mormon Trek, just to Kiwanis Park. So that's why it's wide there. With the hills going up Kai and going up Dolan, it helps to be able to have that turn available for trucks, garbage trucks, and school buses and things, especially when there's icy or whatever. The cement has been there and is in very good shape from when originally it was put in, about early 1980, I think. And I know one of the reasons was because worried about maintenance. You have a lot of through traffic on Benton. Yes, that needs maintenance. There's other streets that need maintenance. Our street could last another 30 years without having to be replaced. So thinking of having to narrow it down for replacement doesn't seem like a reasonable cost. We're also going to have the cost of extending all the driveways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Before I close the public hearing, council, I wanted to...
We don't need to look for a consult, is that what you're about to do, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Were you about to see whether there is an informal consensus?
Yes.
We don't need that for a comp plan amendment.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Bergus.
Second, Thomas.
All right, council discussion.
I'm grateful to see additional form-based planning and glad it's in the comp plan, and hope to see more of that.
Certainly interesting seeing, you know, what the last plan looked like in 2002, and how dramatically the approach to land use planning has changed. Not only in terms of the housing types, I know we talk a lot about the housing types, but the incorporation of more thinking with regard to the streets, the public realm, the parks, the idea that, you know, you try to create gathering places or centers within close walking distance throughout the 200-plus, 1,800 acres. All of those are relatively new concepts, and, you know, we've seen them now being implemented both in the South Park and here, and so I am pleased to see that we've been able to jump on that particular approach, because I think it certainly, as Kirk indicated, addresses many of the issues that we're facing now more effectively than the way we used to do things.
As Mayor Protem Alter said, it is helpful to see this plan so well laid out, so that you can really visualize what it's going to look, even though it's going to be, I was shocked when you quoted the 20-to-30-year plan, but one reason I dast about the length is, I know that Weber Elementary was at capacity as soon as it was built. So there is, I'm a proud Westsider, and it is starting to overflow, and there is a big need for it. So I was kind of wondering how we're going to time that and have discussions with the school district about the importance of them funding another school out there. It's just a very important, going to be a very important need, especially if you have the number of people living, especially families that are going to live out there, because I can see that families would be drawn to this kind of an area, especially if there's a school and you have the parks, and that's a really wonderful thing. I think for years on the council, there were certain council members that talked about, there just isn't infill areas left in Iowa City. John knows who I'm talking about, but there is. The west side, I mean, this is primary for development, and I do like that, the focus on the pedestrian network, the mix of the housing types, which I truly do hope, and there's some question, I mean, people's definition of affordable is different, but it is an absolute necessity and just absolutely cannot, nothing wrong with it, but it cannot be any more of these $300, $350, $400,000 homes. We've seen that. I mean, Camp Cardinal Boulevard is bursting out of its seams, and primarily, a lot of those are very expensive homes. So I'm hoping that that will happen. A lot of these are kind of unknowns, it's just that it might happen, but having that plan, as I'd said, written down, I like, the additional fire station obviously is going to be wonderful, and like I said, the elementary school, so all those kinds of things. I do have that concern, because we got the correspondence about the resident on Kitty Lee Road, Kitty Hawkley, Kitty Lee Road. It was concerning to me, because her description was that previously, when it was a through street, it's very hilly and it was very dangerous, and actually, I think she mentioned that a child did get injured or killed on that road. So I think that if that is the plan to extend that, that would need to be seriously looked at in the future before that happens, so that they can level it out or make it so that it would be a safe, safe place to travel. And also note, if it's 20, 30 years down the line, that future councils down the road revisit the whole transit, the whole Iowa, we just recently did that, but there's going to be major need for folks out in that area to have transit. But otherwise, all in all, I mean, it looks like a really wonderful plan, except for those things that I hope that will be looked at.
I'm just really over the moon about what we have in front of us here today. We have a great example of really smart planning that really, I think, very closely gets us to, you know, the ideals of our strategic plan, housing in neighborhoods, mobility, people being able to get places within five to 10 minutes. And even at that point, when we think so far into the future, there's probably going to be really quality public transit integrated into these neighborhoods. So I am very happy with what we have here in front of us today, still in consideration of the concerns that were expressed to council with regard to annexation, with regard to safety of roads, especially with regard to, you know, what we can do to assuage those concerns. I think that those are things that we need to seriously consider, if at all possible. But broadly speaking, I think this is a fantastic thing that staff has put forward, and yeah, I'm very proud to be from Iowa City.
The other thing I might want to mention, since it was brought up, is that I do hope maybe city staff and engineers can look at that Abbey Lane, the sewer issue there, and see what can be done about that.
This is exciting, because it does speak to so many parts that fellow counselors just talked about, our strategic plan, where you are, how mobile it is to get to parks and such. One thing that I want to highlight about this is, it really does allow for city staff, for all of the residents in our community, as well as developers, to know what to expect. And I think that's been one of the biggest challenges that we've faced, is everybody don't know what to expect, a lot of ambiguity and what can be there, and this really does. I love when you have the T3s and all this stuff, you know exactly what can go there. And so that's what I really appreciate about a form-based code model that we're now switching to.
Agree with all of that, and I think one sign of a good plan such as this is, I look at this, and I'm glad to be a part of this decision-making process at this time, but I'm a little jealous of the people that might get to live in this design or this vision of a neighborhood, knowing that there'll be some changes between now and then, of course, but it's sort of like one of those, like, wow, yeah, that'd be a really cool place to, really cool place to be, wish they'd have done this 50 years ago. No, 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 no.
Better late than never.
No shade on the council 50 years ago, just more of a commentary on the potential of this vision.
I think everyone has said what I have been intuiting or thinking, but have said it much better than I, so I will leave it at that. I think the only thing I would want to emphasize again is that I know that the vision of the future also needs to coexist with the present, right? And so I am very, I want to thank the woman, Ms. Foal, who came up to speak about, it sounds very knowledgeably and with a depth of experience living in that neighborhood. And so I would just echo what Counselor Taylor was talking about, that perhaps, you know, we can sort of work through what your concerns are, along with engineering, to perhaps assuage some concerns and be able to work on some solutioning together. It may not be exactly as is, but on the flip side, you know, certainly, we don't want to bulldoze the present in order for the future, but I think that there's a way for both to be able to coexist well. And just thank you for speaking up, and this plan looks phenomenal to me, and thank you for everybody who worked on it.
One thing I will mention, it was great to hear that the 10% affordable housing for the annexation is required, because this is a whole, I mean, essentially, it's a new area, and so that is good for me. I always say it, developers, we love you, we need you, and please just know that the heart of Iowa City is, we need more affordable housing. And so I ask that people come with that in the forefront of their mind, and making sure that when they do come, that affordability is a real thing, because sometimes we hear, affordable to who? affordable to who? Because affordability, as Counselor Taylor mentioned, that means a lot of things to a lot of people. So, with that being said, if there are no other comments, we will go to roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 9B, rezoning Western Home, GPD of Iowa City. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 31.2 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Road and north of Gathering Place Lane from interim development single-family residential and low-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay to medium-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I have several leadership positions with St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, which is one of the current property owners, we have a purchase agreement with the Western Homes, folks. So, because of that conflict, I've continued to... Or I have recused myself from all discussions at the staff level here within the city and I will continue to do so tonight. Sue Dulick with my office will handle this matter from our office.
Thank you. And we will welcome Sue Dulick. All right. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome Danielle Stitzman.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Danielle Stitzman. As you've introduced this item, it is a rezoning for the area located in the white boundary here. It's one of the few large undeveloped areas within the city. We would probably call this infill at this point since it's surrounded all sides by otherwise developed areas or areas that have gone through recent rezonings. So, unlike what we've been talking about in greenfield areas, this one's a little bit more tricky. It has lots of impacts for things around it and has to juggle quite a few of additional concerns, including sensitive areas. This shows the area, again, the current zoning around it. And as I mentioned, it does contain some sensitive features. So, the proposal before you tonight is for a rezoning to an overlay district, a planned development overlay district because of those sensitive areas and because the applicant is requesting to include a mix of housing in a conventional zoning district. We've long had this OPD process to facilitate that kind of zoning. It's this transition in zoning, the evolution of zoning between truly conventional zoning and what we're doing in our greenfields, which is form-based code zoning, is kind of trying to do that mix of use and respond to the environment at the same time through a tool of overlay zoning. So, in this case, there would be 35 single-family homes and a mix of duplexes in with those shown on the Northern Loop Street here, as well as a multifamily development and assisted senior development included as well. So, you can see some townhomes on the southwest corner of the development and the pink-brown color, I guess, is showing up on the screen up there and the patty... Or the single-family homes and duplexes in more of a blue and brown. To the northwest side of this area is where sensitive areas are present, including a stream corridor, some slopes and woodlands, as well as a wetland. So, those would be the sensitive areas that I've mentioned. When we look at an overlay zoning district, it has some typical review criteria having to do with the conference of plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood, as well as four additional criteria. So, I'll walk you through those here quickly. The first additional criteria that we evaluate has to do with density and land use. In this case, because of the sensitive areas, the developer is moving development off of those areas, as is required, and concentrating them in areas that do not contain sensitive areas. While they are doing that, they are still well below the density that the base zone would allow. So, they're clustering development, essentially keeping it away from the sensitive areas, but staying within the maximum density allowed for this land area. As I said, they're proposing a variety of types of housing, including single-family, duplex, and multifamily, as well as senior. In the vicinity to this particular use is other housing. So, to the west is a new housing dwelling, residential dwelling, proposed redevelopment. To the east is existing single-family and to the north, on the other side of the stream, is single-family as well. To the south is a church and multifamily apartments. So, in general, the layout of this site transitions the density within it from higher density to lower density to kind of match the surrounding neighborhood around it. It's certainly appropriate to have dwelling units next to other kinds of dwelling units. We like to see a mix of housing. And the elevations that they're proposing, their massive scale is typical, except for one of the waivers that they're requesting to have a slightly larger multifamily building than the base zoning would allow. They are also accommodating off-street parking in ways that are encouraged by our code, such as screening it, putting it underground, or putting it behind uses. The open space requirements are not being waived with this development, so they'd still need to provide all of the private open space and public open space as part of the development. As I mentioned, there is a development of a street network proposed here, including a Loop Street with some cul-de-sacs off of it. It is finishing the connections to the surrounding street network as best as it can. As I mentioned, this is infill, so unlike a greenfield site, we can't lay out a grid street network necessarily. We're working with the sensitive features and we're working with where we can and can't make connections. So, as you notice, to the east of the site, there's really no opportunity remaining to connect. So, we've made connections as best as we can. One of the conditions involved in this application will be a contribution of funds to contribute to the construction of Camp Cardinal Road to ensure that those connections are made where they can. This does show the elevations for the single-family and duplexes. As again I said, very typical heights and forms proposed, as well as the townhomes, assisted living, and mixed use. Again, another criteria that we evaluate has to do with the burden on streets and utilities. This area can be sewed and watered and the street network has been evaluated to ensure that there are connections, to ensure that for the density proposed, the traffic can be accommodated. One of the kind of unique proposals here is some angled on-street parking. That's addressed in a condition to make sure that while we're allowing that innovative kind of on-street angle parking, that there's adequate provision for snow to be removed by the private property owners. Also, we look at whether the OPD rezoning will result in any more of an impact than a conventional district would. In general, that tends not to be the case. This development, while asking for a few waivers, they're very limited. They're not asking for increased setbacks in all of their houses, for example, just a few here and there to accommodate the sensitive features. So, really, there are no impacts expected beyond what a conventional development would Again, we think this is in the public interest. The waivers that they have proposed, we've evaluated, they seem to be the minimum necessary in order to accommodate a cluster development in an infill situation. And again, those exact waivers are included and documented as part of this OPD. So, to the general criteria that we evaluate, compliance with the comprehensive plan. There is no district plan in this area, so we refer to the comprehensive plan. Again, the density proposed here as well within the vision of the comprehensive plan. We're obviously getting a mix of housing types, which is encouraged in our comprehensive plan objectives. Also, extending street networks where we can, ensuring the pedestrian network with sidewalks and things like that are also accommodated. And of course, preserving sensitive features. So, in regards to sensitive features, they're pictured here on these two slides. They have every kind of sensitive feature in this particular area that they might come across that we regulate. And they are fulfilling all of their regulatory requirements for that. They're staying off steep slopes. They're protecting the number of acres of woodland that they're required to protect. The only impact they really have is to wetlands and the fact that they are going to reduce the buffer around the wetland, which is allowed by code. It depends on a wetland specialist doing a study, which they have done and submitted to staff, which we concur with. So, because of that slight reduction to the wetland buffer, that is part of their overlay district, they had to provide a sensitive areas plan as well. So, that is documented as well. As far as next steps go, this land has been zoned at interim development for a while. It's being proposed for a rezoning tonight, shown in the blue. If it were to be approved, they would still need to go through the plating process, of course, and the design review and site plans and building permits. So, based on a review of the relevant criteria and the specific criteria that I walked you through, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with two conditions. The conditions regard the contribution of funds for the construction of the road and in the event that the on-street angled parking is included in the design, that there's an agreement obligating the owner to maintain those spaces. At their meeting on December 21st, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval with these two conditions. They did conduct a good neighbor meeting in August and staff has received the signed conditional zoning agreement tonight. That concludes my staff report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Hi Danielle. I have one question regarding... You were talking about the, I think it was the multifamily homes that had the... Essentially, they were the height and the size. You said they were essentially okay, but forgive my bad paraphrasing, but you did say that they were slightly outside of what was allowed. Can you go into more detail?
Sure. So, they do itemize the waivers that they are requesting from the base zoning and if my memory serves, it's a 10-foot additional height to the building. And I'm not sure if that's just simply to accommodate a taller ceiling height on each floor, but we would consider that a fairly small height request.
Okay. Thank you.
Danielle, I noticed on the cul-de-sacs, the street is 22 feet wide. Is that correct?
That could be the case and I do not recall... This might be a good question for the applicant, if those are proposed to be private.
It's not all public roads on the drawings.
Yeah. If that's the case, then obviously that impacts on-street parking. But generally, we do favor narrower streets where possible.
I mean, what I was sensing was with the 22 feet, there would be no parking on the street parking on the cul-de-sacs and parking permitted on the Gathering Place Lane.
Sure. So, what we're looking at, just to make sure we're clear, is a rezoning exhibit. It's not a plat, so the exact widths of streets would still be reviewed with plating. So, I'm not sure if the intent was to show a 22-foot and that was what they would additionally want to do at their plating process, but we would reevaluate that for subdivision standards at that point.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and the council, I'm Chris Hansen, CEO of Western Home Communities in Cedar Falls. It's great to be before you with this project. We're excited about it. A little history about who we are. Western Home was started in 1911, so we're soon to be 112 years old. I looked like I might have been there the whole time, but I have not, just the last 27 years. But we are excited to be down here. We're a continuing care retirement community. Steve Rowe is over here with Oak Knoll. I would consider Steve a good friend and complimentary and even though friendly competition potentially, but we've worked pretty closely together in the past. We serve today approximately about 1,400 residents, mostly up in Cedar Falls and our main campus up there, but we also go down to Madrid and Grandi Center and some other communities to help them and manage, et cetera. We do everything from in-home care all the way through skilled nursing care, assisted living, nursing and independent living, and independent congregate buildings. The thing that excites us, Western Home Communities, we really want to develop community and this parcel allows us to create a community inside of the greater community of Iowa City. We work pretty closely with University of Iowa and the School of Nursing, the Somay Center on dementia-specific programming. We've won some international awards with our design in our dementia cottages. So, we're excited about this opportunity and looking forward to see what we can do in the community. Certainly, if there are any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
And council is allowed to ask questions to the applicant, the developer. And sorry, I should have invited you all up before I opened public meeting. Here in none. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Just want to make sure that the council... I want to ask the councilors if they're inclined to support P&amp;Z, which they approved this, six to zero. Just... All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. Council discussion.
Well, Danielle, I think is correct in saying that, you know, this planned overlay development process is a real wild card. In my experience, it really can go all over the place. So, it's very unpredictable in terms of what one might expect as an outcome. And I'm really pleased with this plan. I think it's works... It's very... The site plan was done with, you know, high sensitivity to the natural areas. It was done with, I think, a high sensitivity toward trying to create a sense of neighborhood in its form. I'm pleased that you employed an architect on the design of the buildings. I think some of those single-family designs are fabulous. I love the duplex design particularly. And it's, you know, it is a blend of housing types, but they do seem to be of a family. And this is sometimes what happens on the planned development overlay is there'll be a kind of radical jumps in scale. And I see these as being, you know, complimentary to one another. I'm personally okay with a narrower street. I didn't want to suggest that I was opposed to it. In fact, I mean, I sense that it was done because you're building on these knobs and you really want to limit the extent of the roadway so that it's possible to do that well. And insofar as they are public, will be public roads. The less concrete and asphalt, the better, as far as I'm concerned. And they're short enough where if it is something where the parking is not allowed, I think parking on the Gathering Place Lane seems perfectly adequate. So, you know, congratulations. I think it's a really interesting project. I do find it also interesting, if you look just to the east of the development, the size of the lots in Walnut Ridge. You know, we talk about the evolution of planning over the years and those are acre lots. I mean, you could fit four or five of these single-family homes, it looks like, on one of those lots. So, it's a very interesting contrast. But again, I think this is a nice expression of where we're at now.
I also appreciate seeing the level of detail that isn't necessary at this stage, that you are willing to give us at this stage. It does make it easier to understand what the finished product will look like. I know there's plenty of caveats in the fine print of those items that look more like plans, but certainly having, as John indicated, a local architect working on those is very helpful to see. So, thank you for that.
As Counselor Thomas mentioned, the attractiveness of these buildings, and I also appreciate that, having seen over the years so many cookie-cutter kinds of buildings, you know, glass and steel and concrete, it's going to be very attractive and it's kind of unfortunate that it's actually going to be kind of tucked behind, you know, unless you're really going there to the church or in that area, you won't see it too much from Camp Cardinal Boulevard. But it's going to be very impressive. And I also commend you for developing senior housing. Having recently had to go through a process of trying to find an extended care facility for a friend, it's difficult. It's very hard to find someplace that's suitable or recommended by folks. So, unfortunately, she won't be able to... She's already someplace, so she won't be able to fit into this one, but I look forward to the development of that and seeing folks live there.
I'm not going to repeat too much of what's already been said. I echo all the same sentiments. I think really what I want to emphasize is my appreciation for, again, the detail, especially, you know, as much of the preservation of sensitive environments, the natural environment as possible. Something that I experienced when my late grandmother, you know, passed away and we moved her to a... I guess prior, we moved her to an assisted living facility, was just the amount of joy that people at that point in their life can get from even just being able to look out into a green space and have a bird feeder there. So, the fact that you guys are really taking this much care to preserve the wetlands and protect those areas so that they can... protect those areas so that they can be, you know, a good thing for the environment as well as your residents, I think is truly commendable.
I agree.
All right. I'm going to support this rezoning. One question I have is related to the conditions that the P&amp;Z gave. Do we know if the applicant was supportive in agreement?
They were, Mayor. They have signed the CZA already and turned it in.
Okay. All right, thank you. No, I think all the comments have already been said, so, yeah. All right, are we ready for a vote?
I think so.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
All right, motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 9C is rezoning West Benton Street and Orchard Street. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 3.52 acres of land located north of West Benton Street and west of Orchard Street from low-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay, now Riverfront Crossing Orchard to Riverfront Crossing Orchard. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome once again.
Good evening once again. Danielle sits with Neighborhood and Development Services. So this is the rezoning just mentioned, highlighted again in a white outline here, shown just north of Benton Street off of Orchard Street to the west of South Riverside Drive. The subject property is currently developed with a mix of single-family duplex and fourplex units. The proposal is with the intention of allowing for redevelopment of this area. Shown here is the current zoning. The blue is actually Riverfront Crossings Orchard District, where it's already been rezoned. So this subject property includes the southern portion, which was already subject to a rezoning, already appropriately zoned. At that time, it did have some conditions with it. Because the area to the north is now being combined with it and kind of produces a different overall effect, those conditions need to be redone, and so the entire area is being requested for rezoning. Just a little background to walk you through the history of the Orchard District and Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Codes. We'll start with the development of the Form-Based Code, well, sorry, development of the master plan. So in 2013, there was a downtown and riverfront master plan adopted. That area is shown here in gray. In 2016, that was amended to add what's shown in peach here, the Orchard District. So on its southernmost side, southwest side, some additional land was added to that district. The purpose of that was really because at the time, there was some development interest in that area, which has obviously come to fruition, and encouraging Form-Based Coding for that area. It was adjacent to the Form-Based Code area that was already studied, and the intention was to include that in the master plan. And then in, sorry, 2017, to adopt a Form-Based Code, actually specifically. So that's the implementation. The zoning code is, are the rules that implement the Form-Based Code. So while there was the plan, I went back a step here again, the plan showed essentially what the development concepts were at the time. So you see here directly from that master plan, the kind of box outline of potential development. The photo on the bottom of the screen is what was included with the rezoning then, that followed in 2019, showing two buildings essentially on that northern part of the site. That reflects what's shown kind of in this pop-out of the Form-Based Code regulating plan. So this plan is the plan that's in our zoning code and has some really rigid or regulating aspects to it, including on this screen, which looks like a blue line to me, the pedestrian street that bisects that northernmost property. So that's a requirement in our zoning code. It basically breaks up that southern part of the site into two buildings, and that's what was proposed at the time, and then leaves that northern portion un-bisected by pedestrian street and allows for the street network to remain in place. As I said, in 2019, the southern part of the site was rezoned to Riverfront Crossings Orchard District, so that's actually got a zoning district. As I said, it had several conditions on it, primarily ensuring the dedication of right-of-way along Benton Street that we know the city needed, ensuring that that pedestrian street had the right kind of public access easements over it, and executing an affordable housing agreement, which is actually already required by code, but was just being highlighted at the time. So at this time, as I said, the applicant's adding some land to the proposed development, the northern portion. They need to have that rezoned to Riverfront Crossings Orchard, and so this zoning application is for all of those areas at once, and to craft the right conditions for this overall development. What's shown here is their proposal, kind of the same white box outline, massing study of the buildings that they would propose in these areas, and an elevation as well. As I said, the zoning code is what actually implements anything in the master plan, and so they would be subject to the zoning standards in the Riverfront Crossings Orchard District. A little bit about the Orchard District. As it was crafted and written, it does have some components of it that were meant to fulfill the purpose of the comprehensive plan. So because this is a rezoning, I'll talk a little bit about comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood, and bring that into it a little bit for history. This is a snippet from the master plan, the Downtown Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, talking about what the Orchard District, when it was added, what it was intended to accomplish. Really, that subarea was intended to be a transition between the more larger and more intense uses along South Riverside Drive and the smaller, less intense uses of single-family further to the west. At the time that the study was conducted, it really was identified that the existing conditions in the neighborhood were kind of a mix and not a good transition between those things. And then adding the Orchard District here would encourage perhaps a little bit more density and really incentivize redevelopment to provide a more orderly transition between those kinds of uses already existing in the neighborhood. Of course, the master plan articulated that that transition should occur in scale, articulated desires for non-desirable things like parking to be kept away from street frontages, and then indicated what kinds of forms, or in this case, what kinds of buildings would be appropriate. It said things like cottage home, row house, townhouse, live-work townhouses, two-to-three-story multifamily buildings with a third-floor step-back. So that was what the master plan was saying, and when the Orchard Court District was written in the Form-Based Code, those aspirations were codified. So for instance, in this zoning sub-district, whereas in other Riverfront Crossings districts, we would be talking to you about height, base height maximums, and bonus height maximums, there are no bonus heights allowed in Orchard Court. The code was more strict in that sense that when it said three stories, that was the limit. Also, it requires by code a step-back after the second floor. So that's one of the major differences in the Orchard District compared to other Riverfront Crossings districts. There are also some minor differences in the setbacks, and there's some limitations on uses, whereas we wouldn't really talk about that in the Riverfront Crossings District. In this part of the town, there are limits on, say, hours of operation for commercial. So talking a little bit about, sorry, the compatibility with the existing neighborhood, talking about the three-story max, the step-back above the second floor, and then there's also a standard that requires an increased separation from residential. So this is the aerial today and the outline of the area under discussion. So in between the rezoning and today, from 2018, 2019, there was a traffic study that the city required to be conducted in 2019, 2018, when the northern portion of the site was being considered for redevelopment, to understand the impacts of traffic. And at that time, it was determined that, but study two intersections, Benton and Riverside and Orchard and Benton, it was determined that there would need to be some additional operational improvements made at that intersection if there was to be additional trips generated. Under the development scenario proposed in 2019, a two-driveway system was considered sufficient to handle that traffic. But looking at that study and the additional developable area being added now to the north, really the recommendation is for signalization. The other recommendations as far as sidewalk improvements and dedication of right-of-way, all are carryovers from that previous rezoning, but really looking at signalization of Benton and Orchard as being necessary with the full development at this time. And a signalization would also include turn lanes on Benton Street. Those things would be addressed, though more specific, through the site planning process. That's where we would require actual design of those improvements to be reviewed by our engineering department. So as far as next steps, this kind of goes through that background again that I walked you through, as far as when the master plan was developed, when this district was added to that master plan, and when we wrote zoning codes to implement it, as well as the 2019 rezoning that has already occurred. And then if this were to be rezoned, since it's in Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code, it does go through a design review by staff as well as site plan and building permits. So based on a review of the relevant approval criteria, staff did recommend approval with the conditions shown on this slide. The applicant held two good neighbor meetings, one in September and one in November. They really had to refine their concepts because what they were initially proposing, we knew would not comply with the Form-Based Code. So they went through that process and did redefine their concept. They made sure that they could do that without needing any changes to the comprehensive plan. So for instance, removing that pedestrian street was not part of what they presented at that second good neighbor meeting. They're respecting the concepts expressed in the master plan. They have signed a CZA for all these conditions. However, at their meeting on January 4th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not support staff's opinion and actually has recommended denial of this application. So as I mentioned, a lot of these conditions are carryovers. They're to ensure sidewalk widths, traffic signalization, other off-site improvements, 30-foot-wide public access easement over that pedestrian street, a dedication of right-of-way to the city, and any additional easements as necessary. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't hear any questions.
I do. Did you see staff is recommending denial of the applicant?
No, staff did recommend approval with conditions. The way that they structured the vote at Planning and Zoning Commission is in the affirmative, but it failed to receive an affirmative vote, so therefore it's a recommendation of denial.
Gotcha, gotcha.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to, the developers want to come forth at this time? All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
And good evening.
Brian Belk, Acxiom Consultants, here representing the applicant's design team. Mike Welch is also here with us, and then Zach Feldman with Aptitude Development is also here from the applicant. Yeah, we just appreciate the report given by Danielle and city staff. As she noted, we've been working on this with the design team and the architect and everybody involved for at least six months, if not more, up till now. And as noted, this project has evolved over time based on staff conversations, discussions, as well as good neighbor meetings, and we appreciate everybody's attendance at those and their interactions. So it started at one time as one large building and four additional parcels that required a comp plan amendment, including an Iowa City piece of land, and has dwindled down to three smaller buildings and eliminating those other four parcels. So the project has changed quite a bit, as Danielle has noted. Again, had two good neighbor meetings, had really good interactions with a lot of people who live around there or transverse around that area and have been for quite a while, and we appreciate that. As noted, staff does recommend this, and we do accept all the conditions. The applicant accepts all the conditions that were put on this, including traffic signalization and turn lanes, improvements to Orchard Court, Orchard Street to the north there, so that'd be removing, replacing that street and improving that as well. Some of the issues that came up during P&amp;Z, we feel have all been met in terms of city code and the rezoning, and that's the issue at hand is the rezoning. So those issues regarding traffic, again, we've met per city requirements and per the direction from city staff. Parking, we are meeting and would and will need to meet all parking requirements based on city code. Same with affordable housing. They acknowledge the 10%, and we'll certainly be taking care of that. And then as Danielle noted, there is not a density requirement per se, but a height and the three stories, which obviously we would meet and be required to meet as well. Just a couple additional notes. We've met, even though it's later in a site plan process, we did meet with the fire marshal on a couple different occasions and talked through what this would look like for fire protection. So we've had a couple really good productive meetings. They're all on board with what we're looking at and proposing to date. And I guess I'll just let you know, too, in terms of parking on-site right now, if you saw that earlier, there was the three buildings. That north building contains all the parking within that building. So essentially, it's a parking structure within that north building with liner units around it, like townhouse look liner units around it. So two to three levels of parking internally within that north building that would house all the required parking and the number that is required, again, per code. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are you intending to monetize parking for residents?
I don't know if I have an answer to that, and I don't know if Zach does either on how they handle that. Yeah.
My name's Zach Feldman. I work for the developer Aptitude Development. Thank you for the opportunity to present our project. We look forward to one day being a part of the community. For parking, we are still discussing the rate, things of that nature, but we do plan to charge for parking in line with other projects in the area. Thank you so much for your time.
Any other questions by council? All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please come forth. There is a sign-in there. Please sign your name. Please state your name and the city you're from. Welcome.
Hi. Paula Swigert, Iowa City. If you persevered through my email, you already know the reasons I'm opposed to this rezoning. I'm a longtime resident of the Miller Orchard neighborhood, and I will be impacted if this proposal is approved. As you know, there are layers upon layers that the city has in place to guide the vision and future development of Iowa City. I have participated in this process for many years. As a result of this proposal, I've recently spent many hours sifting through all these various plans. The strategic plan 2023 through 2028, IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan, Southwest District Plan, Downtown and Riverfront Crossings Plan, Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Standard, Sub-District Standards for Orchard Neighborhood, and the Miller Orchard Neighborhood Plan of 2009. It all comes down to several key ideas that run through all of these plans. Transition should be complimentary in mass and scale to the adjacent, single-family neighborhood. Affordable housing, which the applicant will pay fee in lieu of. Open space. Ensure infill development is compatible and complimentary to the surrounding neighborhood. Avoid concentrations of high-density, multifamily zoning directly adjacent to low-density, single-family zones. Provide a diversity of housing for a variety of people and of all incomes. Attract long-term residents to downtown Riverfront Crossings and the university impact zone. Preserve the existing housing stock in neighborhoods near downtown and campus. Stabilize older neighborhoods. Encourage dormitory-style housing for university students away from single-family neighborhoods. Infill redevelopment in areas where infrastructure is already in place and without compromising neighborhood character. As presented at P&amp;Z, this proposal is a vague concept of 189 units of student-oriented family housing. It amounts to a huge upzoning. Please stick to the plan.
Yeah, my name is Ken Rue, Iowa City. I live, I would be one of the adjacent affordable housing homes there, and it'll impact us a lot. We've lived there 45 years in our house, 302 West Benton. Our daughter lives beside us with their kids. Our son and his wife ended up buying the house across the street because we do a lot of stuff together. So that's, we call that Rueville, and I'm the mayor of Rueville. But anyway, at any rate, we've, that's been our little piece of heaven, believe it or not. A house on West Benton Street is anybody's piece of heaven. That's what we bought, and we loved it. We added on to it a little bit, and we've got a whole family right there. And it's been quiet. We have a little creek around back that's always been there. And to think of massively putting hundreds of students right in that area where it's already too busy, to us, it's just really disappointing to think that could happen. But also, the traffic is so bad already, and then if you add 189 more units and they all come out of Orchard Street, one block from Riverside Drive, excuse me, it's already congested, especially at certain times of the day. So we just feel like it could be ruining our little tiny utopia there. And all the places along there, we've lived there 45 years, all of the homes, all of the rented places or homeowners have been, as far as I ever know, full all the time. They haven't sat empty. Places along there, at least our areas, all have never gotten really run down. Most of them have had siding added. People take pride in it. Yes, there are a lot of rentals, but so what? I mean, people should be able to afford a rental place, too, that's actually a home. And it just feels like the wrong thing to do to pack even hundreds and hundreds more students in there where, like Paula said, it wasn't ever a part of the plan all along for the last couple decades, anyway. So let me see if I missed anything. That's basically it. I won't take any more of your time, but hopefully you'll consider all of those things, too. We appreciate it. I know the zoning commission did take some of that into account, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? I see no one online. Welcome.
Hello, Mike Welch, Welch's Design and Development. I am working with the applicant, but I kind of would also like to address council, just as a citizen of the region and just the kind of how I see this process playing out on this project and other projects. I do sympathize and understand the concerns of the neighbors, and we have a redevelopment project like this that's understandable. But I also think it's really important, as we look at areas, especially within Riverfront Crossings, that this rezoning request really kind of meets what the comprehensive plan was envisioning. As Danielle pointed out, the two buildings on the south are already in the Riverfront Crossings plan and rezoned that way. This new rezoning stays consistent with that original rezoning from the 2019 rezoning, and it really just adds the piece in the north, those three apartment buildings that exist in the north. And so I think as we look at what's before us tonight, it's really important to focus on the questions of rezoning and let the questions of site plan and traffic and those things happen at the time when they're supposed to happen, which would be during design review and site plan. So with that, that's kind of all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. So council, before I close the public hearing, I wanted to just see if we are inclined to vote with P&amp;Z or against P&amp;Z. So P&amp;Z recommended denial, which means that we wouldn't vote to approve this. So if I can see, and the other thing for our new counselor, anytime P&amp;Z, a P&amp;Z item come before us, the council has the option of, if we're going to vote against P&amp;Z, have a meeting with P&amp;Z. So that is why I paused before I closed the public hearing. So I wanted to know if people are inclined to vote against P&amp;Z so you would approve this project.
Can I say that middle ground, I would like to have a consult with P&amp;Z because I really would like to know more from those, from the body that voted against it, just to get a better understanding. As I went through all of the packet for this development, I got a very clear sense from the neighborhood from talking about all of the intricacies that you brought up. Sorry.
The only challenge, no, we can't.
Sorry.
I am sorry.
I'm sorry. And Eric is like...
Yeah, we can't talk about it.
All right. Yes, I would like to have a consult with P&amp;Z.
So, okay, so you're saying that you would vote against P&amp;Z, essentially, just to have the consult, which is fine.
Just to have the consult.
All right, great.
My feeling is to currently go, one of two things, and I think even a middle ground to what you guys were discussing as well, I would be inclined to concur with P&amp;Z at this point in time.
Okay, if you're inclined to concur with P&amp;Z, so that would be voting against what's before us.
Correct.
So that would not have a meeting with P&amp;Z.
Correct. So what the alternative would be, would be if we were to table this, if possible, if that was germane and allowed, to do a voluntary invitation to P&amp;Z, to have that further discussion, and then take this up at a later meeting.
So I guess if you're proposing a deferment?
Yes.
On this?
Yes.
Then I can entertain a motion for a deferment.
That would be perfect.
So moved.
Move by Dunn.
Second, Alter.
Seconded by Alter. All right, discussion.
On the deferral.
On the deferral.
Yes. I'm so sorry that...
Just how would that work? Exactly.
Well, let me clarify. So of course, you can move to defer. You would want to probably defer to a date certain so we, you know, don't lose sight of this, and so that staff understands your course of action. And also, so Planning and Zoning would know, I'm inferring from council member Alter's comments, that she would like a consult, which you can do regardless of whether or not you go along with council. If you want to have a consult with P&amp;Z, you can request it. They, for clarity's sake, they can accept it, and I would expect them to do so, but don't have to, but at least you've made the offer. Then you would have that all laid out. You've got the deferral to the date certain. If you've got the consult at that meeting, great. And then you would, you know, take action at that point. Obviously, we want to make sure we don't close the public hearing yet as well. Did I address the logistics?
Yes. So our next council meeting is February 7th, just for, the next date for council.
I respect your request, Councilor Dunn, but I'm prepared to discuss this item, and I would be against deferral.
Okay.
I would say that, you know, I'm also ready to discuss, but my personal stance is concurrence or deferral.
Okay.
When is Planning and Zoning's next regular meeting?
I'll check real quick. No, okay. Second. Second in February. Second what of February?
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday. Second Wednesday. So the eighth.
Should be after our next meeting.
Appears so.
15th of February, in case you didn't hear.
Well, Mayor, I think I would, my inclination is to, would be to vote for approval, which would lend us towards a consultation.
Okay, all right. What I do hear, although the, you know, the, what we're talking about now is the deferral, what I kind of hear is two people ready to vote in favor with, and then with P&amp;Z, even though I know we're not talking about that. But you're ready to vote as well.
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to vote. So I think if you're ready to, all right, so this is how we'll do it. If you are ready to vote, what's on the agenda now is the deferment. So if you are ready to vote, which I would assume for those that want to vote with P&amp;Z, but I also have to, I mean, we don't, P&amp;Z don't always have to come. I mean, it's just an offer that we give them. But I try to see where the majority lie. So I guess, who is ready to do the deferment?
For the sake of consultation?
For the sake of consultation with P&amp;Z. Let me see your hands.
I think if what you're asking is, yes, I would like to hear from P&amp;Z before making my actual mind on this issue.
Okay.
So deferment, sounds like that's the way to do it.
Okay, all right. So we're going to do roll call for deferment.
All right. Tea, sorry? Yeah, I'm sorry. And to be clear, the date certain to which you want to do it, on which date? Because the next, sorry? The next Planning and Zoning meeting is on the 15th. Now, in theory, we don't have to wait for that, and we can just, you know, sorry, email them and call them to meet at your next council meeting, if that's your desire, and they'll either come or they won't.
So it'll be February 7th at our work session. As well, okay, we'll invite them to that. I see majority.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to consider it to that date, the February 7th, okay?
Yes.
All right. Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Motion passes six to one. All right, so we are going to, this is tabled until that meeting.
And we'll have staff go ahead and invite them per council's request for a consult at the 7th.
Great. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Dunn.
Move by Dunn.
Second, Burgess.
Seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Item number 9D is vacation and conveyance of right-of-way, resolution vacated approximately 266 square feet, a public right-of-way located at northwest corner of South Riverside Drive and the Iowa Interstate Railroad and authorizing conveyance to FFI Farms LLC, Kevin C. Kane Re, I don't know why I'd say that.
Revocable.
Revocable Trust, and Lindsay R. Kane Revocable Trust. I'm going to open the public hearing. And we're going to welcome Danielle Stitzman.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a portion, small area of right-of-way the city acquired and no longer needs. So we are more than willing to vacate it and convey it back to the adjacent owners. It's located north of this railroad crossings, and we were hopeful that we could use it to improve pedestrian connectivity. Our path towards that pedestrian connectivity has changed. We no longer need this area. So it's, as I said, adjacent to the property to the north, which is subject to redevelopment at the moment, and they've expressed an interest in acquiring it. We go through a process to ensure that the city no longer needs that. We verify that we do no longer need this land. There's nothing in this land that we need to maintain access to for any reason. As I mentioned, the area to the north is under consideration for redevelopment. They're going through the site planning process currently. So with every vacation, we go through and make sure that it's not necessary for public good. In this case, we've determined that it's not. Once it's able to be combined with the development to the north, that area will be doing a final plant, so they would include that land as part of their plating process. Based on the review of relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval. Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that opinion and voted six to zero to recommend approval tonight. Happy to answer questions.
Here and now, thank you. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Please come forth. And there is a sign-in at the podium, or a sticker, that works, too. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Frye, and I'm with Shuttleworth and Ingersoll. I'm counsel for the applicant. I don't have a lot to say, other than that I worked with Attorney Gores several years ago when the city acquired this parcel, and now that the city has evidenced an indication that they no longer need the parcel. We have submitted a purchase agreement to the city with the intention to acquire it. I would let the council know that I've communicated with Attorney Sarah Hechtone. The purchase agreement that was submitted was negotiated between Ms. Hechtone and I, and contains provisions that are acceptable to both parties, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? I see no one online. I see no one in person. And I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Dunn.
Counsel, discussion.
Kind of unfortunate circumstances to lead to this. It would have been great to have that pedestrian access tunnel, if I'm remembering correctly, but Counselor Thomas can help me correct this. Part of the approval for the multi-unit complex there on Riverside Drive was that we would eventually hopefully be able to have pedestrian access there over to Murrell Avenue and on further. And of course, that's not going to happen, and I can understand the railroad and the safety issue and burrowing under their bridge. So this is a necessary thing for that to happen, so I'll approve it.
One clarification, if I may, counsel. Counselor Taylor is exactly right. The original intention was to have a pedestrian tunnel go through the embankment and so forth, and that ultimately was not going to be possible. But we are still planning on having connectivity between the north and the south of the railroad. It'll just be between the abutment and the first pillar on the roadway and so forth. So it'll be tight, but our engineering staff is working very hard to find a way to make that work so that we'll have that connectivity.
That'll be great, and especially if this develops into also some more multi-units that is going to be necessary.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item number 9E, zoning code amendment, solar and climate action ordinance, ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code to enhance land use, regulations related to solar energy systems, and further climate action goals. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I got it. It's in the drawer. I move that the rule requiring that ordinance must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Dunn.
All right, anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, counsel, discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Alter.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, sanctioned boxing event exception, ordinance amending Title 8 entitle police regulations, Chapter 5 entitle miscellaneous offenses, Section 9 entitle amateur fighting and boxing by adding an exception for boxing matches sanctioned by U.S. Boxing. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second. Go ahead. Jinxed.
Second, Harmsen.
All right, moved by Alter, seconded by Harmsen. And I'm going to welcome our staff, Eric Gores, our city attorney.
Some history and some regulatory explanation. The state of Iowa has quite a bit of regulatory authority, or has exercised quite a bit of regulatory authority as it relates to professional boxing, but very little when it comes to amateur boxing matches. Perhaps as a result, in 2007, the Union Bar started hosting what they called Fight Night, and it was advertised as amateur fights. And what it ultimately was, as found by the press citizen who went to cover at the Union's invitation, was that it was largely people just kind of pulled from the, from the bar, some of whom were not necessarily sober, and many of whom were not well-matched. That is, there would be people who had fight experience that were being lined up against people who did not have fight experience with the expected results. This did not make council happy, and council ultimately imposed a regulation through ordinance saying that you could not host an amateur boxing match or, or fight at an establishment with a liquor license. That was in 2007. Fast forward to this year, well, this year, I think it was earlier this year, now that we're in '23. I was approached by Cliff Johnson, who you may know is a member of our TRC, and he also is the owner and operator of I-Core Boxing, and acts as the vice president, if memory serves, of the Golden Gloves Association of Iowa City. I'm sorry, of Iowa. And that entity received, think Iowa City Tourism Grant funding to bring the Golden Gloves State Championship to Iowa City. And they found a venue, that venue is the Graduate Hotel, in their ballroom downstairs. Unfortunately, the, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, notably, the Graduate Hotel has a liquor license, and thus, we, you know, they couldn't have it in that event, or in that location, barring an exception. So after talking about it at the staff level and recalling, you know, the rationale for why council in 2007 passed this ordinance, and believing that they did not intend to prohibit Golden Gloves events or other, you know, highly sanctioned, highly regulated, and well-run events, drafted an amendment to allow for events that are sanctioned by USA Boxing. I did have conversations with Mr. Johnson to ensure that that would be enough to separate the kind of thing that used to happen from the kind of thing that, you know, we want to happen in Iowa City, and then he assured me that it was. So that's what's before you today, I'd be happy to answer questions to the best of my ability.
Any questions for Eric at this time?
May I just comment that your powers of summary are unparalleled?
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, counsel discussion.
Well, without regulations, I could see how a truly amateur boxing match could get out of hand, and, and we certainly don't want that. But this proposal implies that these matches would be highly regulated and well-run, with said regulations in place from a health and safety standpoint. And I have great regard for Cliff and, and what he has done for the youth and young men in, in this community. So from a health and safety standpoint, I don't see any problem with this.
I'm very much in support of this. I actually ran into one of Commissioner Johnson's students at the city's Martin Luther King Day events at Mercer Park, just by happenstance, and he, he told me all about the situation before I even realized it. And, no, it, it really was great to hear about his personal story and, and what he wants out of the event. And he wants to be, you know, on the Olympic team, you know, representing our, our country. And I think that supporting, you know, someone's dreams in that regard, again, while taking into account the safety aspects of the situation, is a, is a great thing to do.
I don't know much about boxing, except I do a little boxing, but it's not at this level at all. This is gonna be awesome for Iowa City to have this in our community. And, and I would say thanks to I-Core Boxing and Commissioner Johnson, who's on our TRC, for even bringing this forth and having this operation to even be considered in our, in our city. I, I would agree that young folks here will benefit from this on many levels, but there's also older individuals as well that partake in boxing activities, and I think this would be great. And hopefully, there'll be more opportunities where some light in this arena will be shown here in Iowa City. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 is CPRB ordinance. Ordinance amending Title 8 entitled police regulations, Chapter 8 entitled Community Police Review Board, to clarify a person who observes an incident on social media does not have the requisite personal knowledge to file a complaint, and this is the second consideration. And staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinance must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor?
Second, Thomas.
Seconded by Thomas. Public discussion, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Dunn. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, city council committee appointments. 12A, graduate and professional student government organization. Graduate and professional student government organization, one 2020, 2022 appointee was Weiner. And so now we have to, there's actually four, if I remember correctly, that we have to discuss. Right, four. And what, what we might do is, I'm gonna read all four at one time, and then we'll go through and discuss them all. 12B is Iowa City Area Development Board, Iowa City Area Development Board, I-CAD. This will be 2022 through 2023 appointee. Freuen and Weiner are current, were on this. And then 12C, Joint Emergency Communications Center Policy Board. Joint Emergency Communications Center Policy Board, 2022 through 2023. Appointee is Taylor and Weiner. 12D, Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County. Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County. City manager, city clerk, city attorney have served as alternates in the past years. 2020, 22 through 2020, 23 appointees are Alter, Burgess, Harmsen, Taylor, Thomas, and Weiner. All right, so maybe what I will do is first state the obvious, that 12D for the Metropolitan MPO JC, you would actually be just assigned on that one, Dunn. So we would have Counselor Dunn assigned to that. So we really have three to discuss. So what I might suggest we do is, if there is someone that has interest in either the graduate and professional student government, Iowa City Area Development Board, or the Joint Emergency Communications Center Policy Board, JEC, if you just state your interests, and then we'll go from there.
Actually, could I ask one piece of information? Do we have like the timing on, is it the, the Emergency Communications Center Board? I think it says eight o'clock, 8:00 AM, January, March, June, September, November, and December, but doesn't really, unless I missed it, doesn't say eight o'clock what days?
Usually Fridays.
Usually Fridays?
Fridays, and, and it is 8:00 AM, thanks to Counselor Weiner, when she was on there, they used to meet at 7:30, and she moved that they start at eight, so, but it is eight, so that's a pretty strict time.
Always a sensible woman.
And that's Fridays?
Fridays, one Friday.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to make those because of work commitments, so.
I, I would say that I'm interested in the Graduate and Professional Student Government Organization, I-CAD Board, obviously the MPO. And then I know that Jeff has expressed some interest in doing the Joint Emergency Communications Center Policy Board, if I'm remembering correctly.
Well, I've, I've been on that board before, so prior to Janice and Pauline taking that, I served on that board for a term or two, and happy to do it again. It can be technical at times, and there is some benefit in just working closely with police and fire to be able to understand their concerns and bring them to the board. That said, I, I really have no qualms if there's somebody on the council that wants to take that seat.
I'm interested in the JEC board, and also worried about you adding things to your plate, Jeff. I don't know how colleagues feel about that.
I have no problem with that.
You would be phenomenal. And in looking at my plate of board commitments, I've got some room. I do have a lot of interest in I-CAD, especially with sort of the way in which my own sense of growth as a counselor, I think it would be, it could be a really good opportunity for economic focus.
Any other interested individuals on any of these appointments?
I do think, actually, you would be a phenom, I mean, you were absolutely like the person who would be absolutely best suited for the liaison, or the, the work with the.
Graduate and Professional Student Government Organization.
I remember actually Janice talking about it, about just what an amazing opportunity it was, and she had one particular vantage point, but because you are closer to it in age, I mean, I think that there's just myriad connections and insights that you'll be able to, to bring forward.
Any other nominations, before we kind of discuss the two that has multiple people? Here and none?
Clarification, clarification, do we have two that has multiple people?
We have, oh, so yes. So because we only have one opening on Iowa City, the I-CAD, as well as JEC, we only have one opening because of Weiner? So it's not, we wouldn't appoint, we are not appointing two people?
Yeah, so my understanding was just that, like, Laura was the only candidate that was interested for JEC.
Oh, so I guess I.
Or were you thinking Jeff?
Oh, did I?
No, 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 no. I thought I heard Dunn in his opening comments state that he was interested in I-CAD, JEC, and graduate and professionals. Please.
Yes, no, so I commented on Jeff potentially doing JEC. I, I'm not particularly interested in JEC at this time.
Okay, so we'll remove you from there. Are you interested in I-CAD?
Yes.
You are interested in I-CAD. So I-CAD is the only one that where we have two individuals that are interested. That would be Counselor Dunn and Mayor Protem Alter. And so I guess the question is.
I'd, I'd support Megan for I-CAD, just because of their transition right now. You know, they're merging with the business partnership, and they're gonna be looking for leadership. So I think just the kind of managerial, dare I say, corporate experience.
The wonk?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be a good fit. No, not, nothing against your qualifications.
And I can sport Megan as well for that.
I think that makes sense.
Can I, can I take out my nomination? Can I just make it easy?
Absolutely, you can take out your nomination, so. All right, here we go. So this will be a vote to appoint Counselor Dunn for the Graduate and Professional Student Government Organization. Mayor Protem Alter for the Iowa City Area Development Board. Counselor Burgess for Joint Entity Communication Center Policy Board. And Counselor Dunn for the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County. So I'm gonna do a voice vote.
Right, we just need someone to make that motion and second, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Harmsen, seconded by Alter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 13, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 13A, Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals, one vacancy, one vacancy for a licensed plumber to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2027. And council discussion.
Looks like we have one good applicant, and I would recommend we appoint Andrea French.
Yes.
Agreed.
I agree. She's a plumber, and that's what the, the seat is for.
And she's got the experience.
There you go.
All right. Can I get a motion to appoint Andrea French?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Taylor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item 14, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Senior Senator Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Senator, Senior Senator Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 15 is city council information. And this is an opportunity for council members to report on various meetings attended, upcoming meetings, community events, and other items of interest.
Would, would now be the time, if I could bring something up like I did before?
Yeah, so one thing that I did was I actually closed our work session, adjourned us, but we weren't fully adjourned, because we still had items on the agenda, like our information packet.
Right, so we gotta go back.
So my assumption is, we could actually go back to work session.
Yeah. We don't formally adjourn, I think we could just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't, I mean, if we went through, and I'm, I'm trying to recall, as you can see, I can't, one way or another. If we did have a formal closing, then I think we'd be stuck, but I did, I'm looking to the city clerk staff to see if they.
You know, you said that we were going, I don't remember if you used the language adjourned.
I did use the language adjourned, yeah. I said we're adjourned until 6:00 PM.
Yeah, well, then we might be stuck. Now, I'm not sure what Counselor Dunn is, is hoping to speak to.
It's a work session agenda, which we can't discuss. Yeah, yep, sorry about that.
It's all good.
Yeah, all right. Any other items by counselors?
I don't wanna steal your thunder, Mayor, but.
Go right ahead.
Well, you can speak to it as well, the Lunar New Year celebration at the Engler on Sunday was just phenomenal. So grateful to get the invite from one of our council applicants, Nali. Really just tremendous talent and great variety of very, very just well-put-together events, so. So happy to see that.
It was intergenerational and multicultural. It was phenomenal. It was great. And I know that Counselor Dunn was there, I'm not sure if anyone else, but it was really good. Yeah, I really enjoyed it. We also had Dr. King's Day, which was a lot of fun, thanks to all the partners that helped with that. That was, I, I thought it was a great celebration for community, community members to come together. So that was real exciting. Mayor Protem and I actually had the opportunity to, to go away to Washington DC. And I, well, there was, so she and I both attended the Mayor's Innovation Project, and, well, I, I won't steal your thunder there. Well, that one. Well, that one, I really liked that one. It's very personable, it's a smaller group. You really, because the word innovation project, you have opportunity to hear what other cities are doing, and they really walk you through some of the nuances of some of the challenges that they had in their communities and how they came up with solutions. And so we walked away with 1,001 ideas, so get ready. We're going to change Iowa City. But, and then the mayor, so, and then I also attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the litany of conferences and presentations that were presented, a lot of information. I have to take a step back and process it all, but I think the overarching, some of the overarching things that I learned, and Mayor Protem kind of alluded to it, a lot is, there's going to be some money coming down the pike to municipalities, and I think we should probably get ourselves ready to at least, like, receive some of that information to even go after it, because it's going to be overwhelming. But also, on a national level, what I saw is communities really looking at the racial inequity, the social justice parts, and every element, not even the national things, the monies that's coming, it was real, they had a, they focused on that a lot. And I think safety was the key term that was used a lot, is making sure that the communities are safe with mental health, safe while walking around. And so there's a lot of things that I walked away with, and I do hope to at some point, one-on-one, maybe share some of those with you all, just to get your minds to thinking about some of these national things that are happening in other communities, which I think we could benefit from. And it doesn't have to be major projects, but just little, small things that I think was very beneficial to learn about.
I won't take up much time, but just to echo some of what he said, the Mayor's Innovation Project in particular dealt a lot with racial equity and social justice, but as it's embedded in every kind of policy decision. And talking about, you know, where are you, your city, on the spectrum of actions that can be taken? And then some were like, it's a checklist, we have a proclamation, and some are really, you know, it, there was a whole spectrum. And I guess there was a lot that was like, we can do this, or we can do more, but what was incredibly heartening was that after, there was this long slide that was like, here's a lot of different things that are being done as called from a survey by the mayors and bringing it together. We're doing so much of this. Can we do more? Absolutely. Can we embed the work that we're doing? Can we think about, you know, racial equity, not just in its own light, but embedded in all the different decisions we do? Absolutely, but we're already on our way, which was incredibly heartening, and it's not to pat ourselves on the back, because I know it's hard. And that was actually something that was really emphasized, but it was really cool when they got a bunch of mayors up to do like three-minute, like, here's an accomplishment that we did, and looked through, and I was like, those are great ideas, and oh my God, we are doing that, and we're doing a version of that. And it is something really is a testament to the council prior, to the work that you all are doing, to staff, because it doesn't happen overnight. So anyway, it was just an amazing conference, but it also really reflects well on the work that we're doing here at home.
I will just make a comment. Some of these cities were 130, you know, thousand people, and they were just starting some of the things that we've been doing. So we have a lot of work to still do, but I think we can be very proud of the intention, the intentionality of the council, the staff in this community for doing some of these things that is really beneficial and healthy for our community.
Just got a question for you, Eric. Have we made it without a petition?
Oh. I was about to say, has it been 14 days?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Well, then I will not answer for fear of...
The answer is no.
Well, the answer is no, but I don't want to jinx you by raising it.
I just didn't know when the days actually started, if it was that day or the day after.
Yeah, the first day is the next day. That's day one, yeah.
Good question. Any other items for the good of the public? Here are none. Item number 16 is reports on items from city staff. Our city manager's office.
Just a quick one-minute brag on one of our staff members. Tim Henness is our senior building official. Tim was recently given the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Iowa Association of Building Officials, which really speaks to not only his great work here in Iowa City over his career, but the impact he's had on the building officials' profession across the state, widely regarded by his peers across the state. So Lifetime Achievement Award, pretty special, and proud to have Tim on our team.
Our city attorney?
Thank you. I'd add that Tim is a really humble guy, and it was my understanding from NDA staff that he stood up to receive the award, said thank you, and sat down. Nothing else from the city attorney.
All right, our city clerk office.
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right. Item number 17, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Burgess?
Second, Thomas.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We are adjourned.